All right, good evening. I'd like to call to session this meeting of the Tacoma Park City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Mayo.
Councilmember Kareshi.
Here.
Councilmember Simmons.
President.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
All right, we're going to have one slight change to our agenda this evening. We are going to move the conversation of the proposed mutual aid agreement with the city of Laurel to before the police department report, so that we end on the police department's annual report. Looking at our agenda items moving forward, next week is Wednesday, March 1st. We will be here. We have a public hearing on the city election date change and sharing of poll places with Montgomery County in the 2018 general election. The public hearing will start at 7:30, so please spread the word. Voting session that evening, we have the second reading ordinance approving the extension of pilots that will vote on tonight as well. And then tentatively, we'll have some resolutions regarding state legislation depending on our conversation this evening. Our work session next week is a discussion of policy for operating wheelchairs and bicycles on sidewalks. This is a proposed amendment to our city code. And then on Friday, March 3rd, we have the Ward 3 Community Coffee at Capital City Cheesecake from 8:00 a.m. to 9:30. I hope everyone can join us. It's not just for Ward 3 residents. Then on Wednesday, March 8th, some of us may be here, some of us may not. It's maybe Women's Strike Day. So, I don't know, we'll see. It is also International Women's Day, so there may be some people here.
I'm a woman on that day.
The voting session tentatively is a first reading ordinance approving a police mutual aid agreement with the city of Laurel that we're discussing this evening. Also, tentatively scheduled is a resolution providing for appointments to the Noise Control Board. Our work sessions tentatively scheduled that evening is a presentation and work session regarding a subdivision application for Ethan Allen and Jackson. And then a tentative discussion of stormwater requirements, proposed project and the stormwater fee. And then the other work session that night is a review of New Hampshire Avenue and plans for next steps there. Let's see, and that then takes us to Wednesday, March 15th. On that evening, we'll be here again at 7:30. We have the first reading ordinance amending the city code regarding requirements for riding on sidewalks. And the second, tentatively scheduled, the second reading ordinance approving a police mutual aid agreement with the city of Laurel. And we will discuss the Tacoma Junction meetings during the city manager's report. I think that's it for upcoming meeting and agenda items. Now I'd like to open it up for public comment on voting items. This evening, we have, the first voting item is the first reading ordinance approving extension of pilots. Are there any public comments on that? Pilots are payments in lieu of taxes. No public comments on that? All right. Our next voting item is we have a couple of resolutions regarding the council's position on legislation in Annapolis. We will be voting on a resolution supporting HB 285 and SB 265. This is the Washington Metro Rail Safety Commission Membership Act. We are also voting on a resolution supporting HB 979, which is a property tax credit for public safety officers. A resolution supporting HB 238, which is a housing, workforce housing grant program. And then a resolution supporting a number of meal programs in schools that have been put forward by Sheila Hickson. Are there any public comments on those resolutions this evening? No? All right. Then we'll move on to public comments on other items you'd like to comment on. Please come to the podium, state your name, and you have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Richard Verdi. I live on Cedar Avenue. I'm going to comment on the Scatter Garden. And I start, when we chose to live in Tacoma Park 33 years ago, we were choosing community and not just a house. There's no place that better represents our values for our family, community, and society at large. We are now looking forward to participating in the Aging in Place movement at Tacoma Park, and now dying in place. I can think of no more suitable resting place to represent our values to our children and their descendants than the proposed Scatter Garden at Tacoma Park. We strove to build our family and lives in this truly exceptional community and hoped that the Scatter Garden will serve not only as a memorial, but also as a continuous inspiration to fulfill these values, which have been so much a part of our lives in Tacoma Park. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Meryl Lefler. It will sound like I collaborated with Richard, but I haven't. My wife Ann Slaton and I live at 15 Sherman Avenue, and we have since 1979. And before that, for two years, on Holstein Street, which is near the college. And for me, even earlier, from 1966 to 1965 to 66, at Maple, you know, Mapleview Apartments. So this is to say that I've lived more than half of my life in Tacoma Park. And I say Tacoma Park, not a house, not our, you know, apartment, not what we rented. But Tacoma Park is home. It's not just a house, it's not just a residence at all. And like many hundreds more, not just my, you know, not just us, my wife Ann and I have been active in various kinds of ways from the beginning, politically, culturally, literary-wise, and in our great neighborhood Sherman, Hancock, and Sheridan avenues. And there are many such unique neighborhoods, as we all know, throughout the city. In 1982, we were side by side with Sammy Abbott and scores of others from Tacoma Park badgering the Montgomery County School Board with facts on their wrong-headed decision to close Tacoma Park Junior High. It was our unrelenting fact-based criticism at school board meetings that year that led the board, the school, Montgomery County School Board, in an unprecedented decision to reopen Tacoma Park Junior High that next year in 1983. And of course, today, we have a thriving Tacoma Middle School. But we wouldn't have if the school board hadn't reversed itself and if it hadn't been for the citizen activism here in Tacoma Park. This is all background, because I'm not just looking to the past. I only say this to emphasize my wholehearted support of a Tacoma Park Memorial Garden. That support has deep roots, as I've said, and for many reasons that you will hear tonight. I think, in my opinion, in my strong feeling, the memorial garden will complement the beauty of the city. And I say complement in both uses of the word compliments, P-L-E-M-E-N-T and P-L-I-M-E-N-T. You know, we sometimes take for granted, those of us who've been living here, you know, the beauty that this city really is, the parks, the trees, the hills, the flowerings, and as well as the friendliness of our streets. One thing Richard didn't say, he came over to, he was walking by our house today, and I think it took him more than an hour, because he kept on running into people that he knew, as we all do, and, you know, we have this great walk-in city. I think for the city council to support a memorial garden will be to acknowledge that what so many of us have chosen to live here. And we have chosen because of the values that Tacoma Park is dedicated to. Those of you who were at the Tacoma Park Sanctuary teaching, and those who are among the hundreds involved in Tacoma Park mobilization will know what I mean. This is especially evident when many of those humanistic values we believe in are under attack. So I am out of time, but I do want to say, to die and to have our remains here in Tacoma Park as a memorial garden speaks for what Tacoma Park means. Thank you.
Thank you. It's hard to cut off the poet laureate. That's not fair.
My name is Janet Lee. I live at 116 Elm Avenue. I'm also in support of the idea of a memorial garden for Tacoma Park. I have lived in Tacoma Park for more than 40 years. My husband and I both lived in Tacoma Park before we were together. We spent our entire married life in Tacoma Park. Our two children grew up in Tacoma Park. Our daughter, her husband and daughter live in Tacoma Park. It's home for all of us. It has been forever. And although I probably will downsize, move into someplace smaller, and have lived in various places in Tacoma Park anyway, it's Tacoma Park, as other people have said, that's home. It's not a house, it's not even necessarily a neighborhood. Tacoma Park is home for us. And what better place for us to stay forever? My husband actually passed away in November 2015, although we have scattered some of his ashes in particularly significant places to our family. We still have some left, and we would love to have them in a memorial garden here. And I would certainly love to be able to ask my family to do the same for me when my time comes. And I hope the city council will support this idea.
Hi, good evening. I'm Kathy Surrace, and my husband Andy Penn and I have lived in Tacoma Park since 1981. Our children were raised here. And I really never thought about something like the memorial or Scatter Garden until Jennifer Beeman knocked on my door, because I, we live on Tulip Avenue, right across the street from one of the parks that is under consideration. And honestly, the subject has always been one I never wanted to even think about. But for whatever reason, I think it's just what everyone has talked about, this idea just really seemed like just a great one to me. I think it's something, you know, it's not for everyone who lives here, but it's, for some people, I think it's very important. And I can't think of any better place to have my ashes scattered than in Tacoma Park. So I hope you'll support the idea for the Scatter Garden. Thank you.
My name is Wolfgang Mürbner, and I'm the president of the Village of Tacoma Park. The proposal was presented to us, to our board, and the board does support the idea of a memorial garden. We'd like to, you consider a place where people can be together, can have time and space for their grief and for their memories. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susan Alexander. I live on Tacoma Avenue, and I've lived in Tacoma Park for about 20, for almost 25 years. I am also speaking about the Scatter Garden, which I think is, would be a very beautiful gesture that the city could make, that would really help to deepen residents' commitment to the community. It would not cost very much, and the beauty of the gesture would greatly outweigh any cost that it might have. There are many ways in which it reflects Tacoma Park's values, but I would like, people have talked about a lot of them already, the intergenerational thing we're trying to do, aging in place, our commitment to the environment, our feeling of being part of the earth. But there's something that people haven't talked about yet, and it's, and this is something that the younger generation, which is perhaps not here to speak about this tonight, it's important for them, is that today, we find that many people are what they call nuns, that they don't belong to any organized religion, and they don't have a particular house of worship that they belong to. Now, I know some people have questioned why the city, why municipality should sponsor this kind of an amenity. And I think that this is part of the answer, is that there is a large portion of the population that is starting to grow, that sees community in the way that perhaps it might have seen a house of worship in the past. And it looks to the community to provide that sense, that sense of belonging to something greater, and also for the opportunity to give things back. And so, a garden like this would really help to cement those feelings and inspire the generation that's coming after us. So I hope that you will give it good consideration. Thank you.
I'm Michelle, I'm Michelle Morgan, and I've lived here over 25 years. I'm for the memorial Scatter Garden. But my take on anything the city does starts with money, maintenance, and sustainability. Some of this is because I was very active with Main Street and spearheaded a lot of the gardening landscaping that was done in Old Town, and as far down as the corner at 7-Eleven, and up to the garden that used to be in front of the co-op. A lot of that I did on my own. I raised the funds that paid for it. I went through several drought years, so putting in any kind of garden, or anything within the city limits that involves time, money, work from the city, or anyone else, worries me. I did it very painfully myself. I loved what I did, but it was painful. I've looked closely at this proposal. I see, almost know, that I can find reason this is going to cost the city, as far as the garden part goes. The places that have been looked at are already parks. They already are mulched, the leaves are picked up, the branches are picked up. What is being suggested is that there would be either rocks or a wall and a bench, and then there would have to be wheelchair access. Once those things are in place, I don't see problems, myself, with sustainability or cost for the city in maintaining the area. There would be some cost with maintaining the records for those who might want to be recorded as being in the area, plaques or whatever. But considering the number of people, as we understand it, who die in Tacoma Park each year, and also choose to remain, many people have other places they need to go afterwards. But of those who choose to remain, it's not a high number, so I really don't see that there's a problem with many costs sustainability. Thank you.
My name is Sandy Egan, and I'm the volunteer coordinator for the Village of Tacoma Park. I think you guys are all aware of what the Village of Tacoma Park does for Tacoma Park's citizens. A presentation was made before the board of the Village of Tacoma Park, and we voted in favor to support the Scatter Garden. Many of our seniors are on fixed and limited incomes. They are always concerned about rising costs, and that includes funeral expenses. With the approval of a memorial Scatter Garden, Tacoma Park seniors will have a low-cost option that will exist for them, and they can still remain in Tacoma Park. On a personal note, I've lived in Tacoma Park for 35 years. I've raised four daughters here. In fact, my oldest is in charge of the Fourth of July parade, so a lot of you know her. I've already told my family that I'm not leaving the city of Tacoma Park, and I've already told them that when I die, I want my ashes spread in the memorial garden, so I hope that you support it, so there is a place for them to put my ashes when I go. Thank you.
Buddy Daniels, 908 Prospect Street, Apartment 3, Silver Spring, Tacoma Park. I've lived in Tacoma Park for 65, 66 years. I'm here tonight to support the Scatter Garden. I only wish someone had come up with this idea 20 years ago, especially when I think of the incredible Tacoma Park citizen activists, poets, writers, musicians, city council reps, public safety representatives, I've had the privilege of knowing over the last 50 years. But 20 years from now, you younger city council reps and younger activists will reflect as you and they walk through the Scatter Garden. It is very powerful. You and others may say, hey, so is a cemetery. And that's true, but the Scatter Garden would be in Tacoma Park. It would be in our city. A small city that from, for the last 60 years, has led the fight to defend the rights and freedom for those who could not defend themselves, and the citizens of Tacoma Park who are involved in defending those rights, some of them may have wanted not to leave this city. I still have my father's ashes, I still have my mother's ashes, and a small portion of my sister's ashes. And you better believe, they never want to leave Tacoma Park. And I never want to leave Tacoma Park, ever. So my family will be in the Scatter Garden. I'm sure many of my activist friends feel the same way. They will never leave this city, and what it represents. You see, we would all still be together for one last time, one last rodeo. And I hope that younger activists will come to the Scatter Garden and reflect and find some inspiration. The same, of course, goes for family members of loved ones that are in the Scatter Garden. They can reflect about their family members, and it's very power, powerful, and it really helps, because family member knows their loved ones wanted to stay in this city. I know personally about how powerful having a memorial to a family member is. I have many times gone to my mother and father's park and sat in front of the sign and asked for advice over the years from them. Recently, I have sat under my sister's mural and just sat on the steps and reflected, especially with what's going on these days. So I'm very aware of how powerful it can be to talk with a family member, especially at a memorial in Tacoma Park. To quote Diana Kohn in an article she wrote about our family, Kay said, and I quote, "People ask, where are you going to retire?" She said, "That's a silly question. Are you crazy? I'm going to go to retire in Tacoma Park. This is my life. This is where I learned everything important in my life." And I think that says it all. Thanks.
I'm Margaret Bowman, and I too am here to support the Scatter Garden. I've been a resident in Tacoma Park for 25 years, and I hope to die here and hope to be scattered here. I don't want to repeat a lot of the things that have been said before, but I will support what everyone else has said. My only comment I would add is that I was undergrad, as an undergrad, was an archaeology major, and have excavated and studied grave sites all over the world. And a grave site and a, and a place for people to put ashes is an important part of communities, and it's been a tradition from the beginning of time. And I think in Tacoma Park, we like to be leaders in new approaches, and I think taking an age-old concept and making it new and innovative and leading in that is an important principle of Tacoma Park, and I would support this as a part of that approach. Thanks.
Arthur David Olson, Hancock Avenue, on a Scatter Garden. I grew up in Glendale, California, home of the original Forest Lawn Cemetery. So I'm used to private memorial sites. There are good reasons to have a private memorial garden in Tacoma Park. It's an opportunity to create a small business. Even if an existing nonprofit such as Historic Tacoma does it, it creates intrinsically local employment, and it protects users. If something goes awry, it's easier for families to get compensation from a private entity than from the city, which enjoys sovereign immunity. While a private Scatter Garden may be a good idea, there are problems with a public Scatter Garden. garden. First, scope. Our city charter has a laundry list of things the city might do, all the way up to creating a civic orchestra, notably absent creating a cemetery or a scatter garden. Before using its general powers, I hope the council would think long and hard about straying from the charter's guidance. Going through the charter amendment process might be long and hard enough. Second, finances. Dog parks may come and go, but human remains sites are forever, and people are likely to continue their habit of dying, so use of a scatter garden would always be increasing. I don't want to saddle all future Tacomans with an ever burgeoning burden. Third, equity. A scatter garden could not be used by those whose religious beliefs call for burial rather than cremation, especially given current national events. I don't want my city starting projects that involve religious discrimination. Finally, public policy. I'm the odd person who has no credit cards, but I do carry a card from the Maryland State Anatomy Board. They get my body when I die, and I've told them that I don't want the remains returned to spare them the expense of doing that. If the council wants to take action in this area, I hope it will publicize and encourage use of the state's whole-body donation program rather than creating a scatter garden. I believe that a private scatter garden is both possible and has many advantages over a public scatter garden in this case. Thank you.
Any other public comments this evening? Go ahead, Mary Jane.
Thank you, everybody, for being here, and thank you, council and the mayor. And I'd like to congratulate the mayor and Captain Collington for the award they got, the community service award they got at the 20th District night. And also, I'd like to thank Wolfgang, if he's still here, I don't know, for his helping Cosna, unless he has a representative parent discussion to conduct. If it wasn't for his help, we would never have gotten started, because God knows, the city, I think, is just learning to listen to me. And I just wanted to thank you for the CDBG grant that we're finally getting, and thank you for that. But I'd also ask for please to please to continue. We are like the canaries, people whose brains don't function properly. We are the canaries, and we'll go first. When you see us dying and hurting, you know, you're all going, you know, you should help. We're the lowest in the poll, and we come in all races, religions, et cetera. Okay, remember that. And all cultures, almost, people like us are ostracized. It's not just in American culture, almost all, virtually all cultures. Like, for instance, my son, when he was shot, my son, I'm sorry, my ex-husband, when he was shot in the head, he was pretty much left for dead for a while, and most all his friends left him because of that. And that's what happens in almost any culture, you know. People, you know, they don't know how to, it's difficult sometimes to deal with, I'll have to admit, but still, we should meet, we're human beings. And thank you very much.
Any other public comments this evening?
Hi, my name is Judy Hagopian, and I live on Cedar Avenue. My spouse is Richard Levine, who's spoken before. I think I'm going to speak from a more personal perspective. I had a serious health condition a number of years ago, which has forced me to face some possibilities that none of us want to have to face, the potential for something that we don't want to face. And I must say, my husband and I were talking about, well, what are we going to do? You know, I'm from Massachusetts, he's from Cleveland. Am I going to go up there? Is he going to go back to Cleveland? And then was, where was he going? Well, he wanted to have his ashes scattered in the mountains, and I wanted mine in the ocean, and there was no, there was no way to come to some resolution. But on the serious side, when I heard that this community had the courage, first of all, to even face what's going to happen to all of us inevitably, and it's not, this is not an easy topic to talk about, it's a very serious one, and most instances, we don't want to think about it. But I commend this group for the courage to think, to be able to think about it. And when I heard that there might be this garden in Tacoma Park, all I can tell you is, and I'll end with that, and I love Tacoma Park, is that my whole body just sort of relaxed, and to me, it was like, that's where I want to be. So, I hope you take this under advisement and consider it. Thank you.
Great. Any other public comments this evening? All right, we will now move on to council comments. Any council comments this evening? Nobody? Councilmember Kovar, who is on the phone with us tonight, do you have any council comments? All right. Okay, go ahead, you're on.
I just mentioned a couple of things, and as they say, take my answers off air. So, and maybe the city manager can answer. One, a number of people have asked me about community shredding. I think once a year, they used to do this, and I'd be interested if that is planned again. That's one thing. Secondly, there seems to be a WSSC project starting up, starting up at Valley View and Willow, and I'd like to get some information on that. And thirdly, in the follow-up to the very enjoyable discussion on curb painting we had last week, a number of people on Tulip Avenue have mentioned they have a serious problem with the encroachment onto their driveways, which I've seen personally myself. So, if there's going to be a pilot program in addition to Sherman Avenue, I nominate Tulip as well. Thank you.
Great. All right, Councilmember Smith?
I know later on tonight, we're going to talk about some of the state legislation before the General Assembly, but I just want to highlight a couple guests that came to the Maryland Municipal League's Legislative Committee. We had the Appropriations Chair Maggie McIntosh and Delegate Carl Anderton, and a couple of things that they said, I think, are really interesting and that everyone should hear. One, they're very supportive of restoring highway user revenue from municipalities in the state of Maryland. These revenues were cut by Governor O'Malley during the Great Recession, so for the last eight years, nine years, municipalities in Maryland have been working diligently to try to get this money back. One thing I did not know, that Delegate Anderton said, that some municipalities in the state borrow money to work on their roads because they don't have it. I mean, that's amazing. The Chair of Appropriations, Maggie McIntosh, mentioned that the executive order from President Trump to stop all federal hiring and wage increases is going to have a devastating impact on future receipts for the state of Maryland, and we probably will see that next year. The state already has structural deficits for the next three to four years, so there will not be any money at the state of Maryland. And finally, one thing that I think is really interesting is Maryland gets a Medicare waiver, and Chair McIntosh is afraid that the Trump administration is going to end that waiver, and it will have a detrimental impact on our neighbors in the eastern shore and southern Maryland that are more economically depressed areas. Thank you.
Councilmember Koreshi?
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to address something that I brought up to the city manager a couple weeks ago, and I'm not going to give up on this one. I understand that we, as a city, want to deal with potentially this issue of parking admin fees being increased 100% within 15 days of somebody receiving a parking ticket, potentially during our parking feasibility study and analysis. But I just wanted to put something on the record, because now it's hit close to home in the Koreshi household. The Koreshis got a $40 parking ticket in the 7,000 block of Carroll Avenue. We may or may not have been at Republic at that time, or Olive Lounge. That ticket was $40. Now, mind you, the only way we learned about this ticket is unrelated, it was never on our windshield, which happens, which happens when I was in New York City. You are issued a ticket, and you don't realize that you've received a ticket until you get a notice in the mail from the DMV saying, "Hey, you got a ticket. You better pay it, or we're going to incur, you're going to incur an admin fee or a late fee." So, on January 19 of 2017, a $40 ticket was received, not received, on the windshield. 15 days later, on February 3, that ticket becomes $80 with no notification, aside from a notification coming in the mail saying, "Hey, it's $80 now." 15 days later is two weeks, probably less if you count, don't count weekends. By the 30-day mark, which I don't understand, a admin fee in the city makes that $40 ticket now a $95 ticket, and I would like more information on what that admin fee is. My understanding from people in the police department is that we utilize a company called Car Plus in New York City that sends out our notifications for parking tickets, and if you were sending notices from Tacoma Park's community center, I think it would get to my house on Fifth Avenue a lot quicker than New York's city, and it's not going to get in within the 15-day window, even if you have a couple days. But the real kicker is, once you've received that $80 delinquent 15-day fee, which goes from 40 to 80, there's another entity in the state called the Motor Vehicles Administration, which, for me, who grew up in New York, it's called the DMV, but around here, that means DC, Maryland, Virginia, I don't get it, but it's basically DC's, or this area's DMV. You also get a $30 ticket for them because you are delinquent on a parking ticket. But that's not it. So, this $40 ticket in a 30-day period has gone to $125 in terms of what your obligation is to the city of Tacoma Park, admin fees, and also to the MVA, which, to me, is inherently unfair and wrong, without receiving, aside from one notification, is that if you want to pay that ticket, you can go on our website, parkingpayments.tacoma park dot M D, and it's another $350 to pay that ticket, which goes up to a whopping $128.50. But if you're willing to not pay it on the system, you can do it over the phone with the lovely people at the Tacoma Park Police Department, including a lovely lady named Dimitri. It's like a dollar 50. So, it's $126.50 in 30 days. That, to me, is absolutely ridiculous. And I think that, I don't do math, because that's why I went to law school, but I think it's like a 221% increase of what the underlying fine is, which even the worst credit card in America will not, is not something you're going to incur in 30 days. So, I recognize that we want to deal with this as a larger parking issue. People already in this town are concerned about tax duplication, which we talk about every single year, because of money out of their pocket, the taxes that they pay here, the scatter garden. And thank you for the scatter garden people for making one of the most morbid issues sound so beautiful. Thank you, seriously. I'm looking forward to death, thanks to each of you. But I will say this, I think that this is a problem, because we talk about equity in this town. Thank God that I have a job, my wife has a job, and we can pay this. But I have challenged it. I'll be going to court on it. It'll be kind of weird, because I don't know where that's going to be and who's going to represent the city. But I think that we need a better notification in the city, and I want to have this larger conversation with the chief and the police officers who are here in the context of the police report. I really think that a lot of this has to do with customer service and communicating with the community. And if that means that, let's kick that penalty out to 30 days, and at the 15-day mark, send people a letter and say, "Hey, you better pay this, or we're going to double your fine." But the fact that you're at $128.50, or $126.50, if you want to save money and pay for it over the phone, I think is ludicrous, and I really would urge the council, this is one of those no-brainers. I know the city manager said last week that it's $30,000 or whatever the impact is, but it's something worth, just for the quality of life in the city, for us to consider and just addressing now, like not waiting for a parking feasibility study. Sure, we're going to talk about a number of things, and there's people in the city that I've brought up before who are concerned about how our two-year parking permits actually expire, even though they may say 2017, depending upon when you get it, in the middle of that year, so you think you have it until December 31, but it might be June 31. There's a lot we have to address with parking, but this, to me, is a no-brainer, and I think the emails that I've gotten from residents, and now that I'm feeling personally, and I'm not making a vote or a move on this because it's personally going to impact me because I'll pay this, but I'm going to challenge it before I pay it, I just think it's wrong, and I think we need to do better in that respect. So, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Councilmember Schultz?
I'll have you know, I was not going to say anything tonight, out of respect for everybody's time and the fact that I couldn't think of anything to talk about.
But now you've got one.
But my colleague, Mr. Koreshi, has inspired me. In terms of thinking about quality of life, I will support his interest in doing that. I think it makes, it's a good case. He's a very good lawyer. I'd like him to be on my defense team. Last year, this is just an anecdote, that we live on Wildwood Drive, we've lived on Wildwood Drive a really, really, really long time. My wife got stopped by a Tacoma Park police officer for turning, making a right turn on to Holton Lane, there's a stop sign there, because she didn't have her right turn blinker on. That got classified as a moving violation, so I forget what the fine was. I guess it was, you know, $40, $75, or something like that. But what happened was, is that it ended up adding a point to my wife's driving record. So, we get the bill from our automobile insurance company, Farmers, or it was, and we noticed her premium on her car had gone way up. And it turns out that this point causes her premium on her car to go up $170 for three years. So, we're no longer with Farmers, but figure that out, three times, that's $510 plus the 40, close to $600 coming out of our pocket for a moving violation for not having her turn signal on, making a right turn. This doesn't support Rizzi's case at all, but I just couldn't resist telling the story.
Thank you. Councilmember Siemens, do you have a traffic, parking-related story you would like to tell us tonight?
As a matter of fact, I just wanted to say that don't expect me to confess like this tonight in front of all of you. I'm shocked at hearing what my colleagues have been doing, and I yield the rest of my time to the mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Mayo?
Thank you. I wanted to ask the city manager for a progress update during your comments about the hiring of a lobbyist or representative in Rockville, and just to emphasize how important I think that is, to be able to represent our interests on everything from school construction to school policy, to the county's budget, to tax duplication, to utility policy, and everything in between. So, I really hope we can get that done soon and get representation in Rockville, which will allow us to increase our capacity and better support our residents' needs.
All right, I just have a couple of updates, and I'll ask the city clerk to add a discussion of the parking tickets to our longer-rolling of the parking tickets to our longer rolling agenda items that we can see where we can fit that into. Thank you, Ms. Machui, we had a good night on, Monday night, many of us attended the D-20 night in Annapolis. We, thanks to our state senator, Will Smith, we were provided with an in-depth briefing on the budget in Annapolis. And it was a nice evening that Captain Collington and I were able to stand with Megan Murphy, who got the award for all the work she's doing in the community. On this Saturday, I will be attending a event at Montgomery College for middle school girls for STEM, science and math and technology. This is a program that is open to any middle school girl interested in STEM programs, so if you have any, know any. I think it begins at 9:30 on Montgomery College's campus, right here in Tacoma Park, and there are flyers out in the lobby if you would like to spread the word on that. So I think those are all the updates I have. I'll turn it over to the city manager. Turn you on.
Thank you. Thanks very much. One of the major initiatives that we have in the city is the Tacoma Junction project, and I wanted to make sure that people are aware that a first set of meetings begins tomorrow. So we have a meeting tomorrow and an identical meeting on Sunday to really encourage the public to come and talk about design issues at the Tacoma Junction site. The first meeting would be to look at the topics of the types of architecture, materials, and massing that would be desired in building on the site, and the types of retail uses that residents would like to see there. The first meeting is tomorrow night from 7:00 to 9:00 PM at the fire station meeting room, you enter around from the back of the fire station. An identical meeting will be on this coming Sunday from 3:30 PM to 5:30 PM in the azalea room here in this building. And there's also information online if you want to weigh in online. A second set of meetings will be scheduled, is scheduled for early March, Thursday, March 9th, and Sunday, March 12th, to talk about how do people access the site, transportation issues to and around the site, mobility issues for people with disabilities, biking, that kind of thing. There's also the kinds of improvements that people want to see on the streetscape, on the sidewalk, and in public spaces on the site. And so again, we'd love to have you come. We recognize that this feels like short notice, that the committee, the Tacoma Junction, always, Community Consultation Process Advisory Committee, I think, worked, I think, pretty hard identifying when to have the meetings, and were pretty constrained by meeting location options. I announced this last week, but it feels, it feels very hurried, and I want to assure you that the committee's been informed of that since. And if more meetings are needed, we're all open to that. And of course, the, the ultimate recipient of this information is the council, so you have a lot of opportunity to say if you want this kind of input. So I do encourage people to come, I think they'll be really interesting, this is what people have been waiting for to weigh in on. So tomorrow night or Sunday afternoon, and more if we need it, because I wanted to make sure that that's out there. I don't know, Councilmember Kovar, did you want to say something?
Yes, I just think that, thank you, I do think that, given the short lead time, which was nobody's fault, it may be necessary, depending on the turnout and so on, to have some additional meetings. So I'd like to keep that open as a real possibility. Thanks.
Thank you. I wanted to, if anybody's been in the building Monday through Thursday during the mornings particularly, it's been packed with people applying for passports. Absolutely overwhelmingly overwhelming number. And so we have one passport agent, Sophia Visseraga, she works Monday through Thursday on processing passport applications, and I provided some information. Last year, January and February, the total of applications that were submitted were 470. This year for January and through February 21st, we already have 552. And it was so busy that we were, had a surprise audit by the State Department today, which they do periodically, and they were so overwhelmed, they helped out doing some of the passport applications, and we're thrilled actually with our passport agent who does a wonderful job, and passed along compliments for her work when it's very heavy, and I'm doing a shout-out to her for, for that. It really is, though, a sobering side of some of the implications of federal policy changes, that people are feeling the need to, to get additional proof of citizenship. And, and so that's one of the kinds of impacts that we have on our staff, just already of, of some federal changes. Two, besides the Tacoma Junction meetings coming up, there's other dates on some items of interest related to Montgomery College. One is a discussion of the Montgomery College and Tacoma Park, kind of the role of, the development of the campus in Montgomery College. And we have meetings scheduled for March 21st, May 9th, and June 6th. There was a typo in information I passed out, so we're having, getting it correct for you online. And the actual times will be announced, and there will be a lot of information going out to the public on this. But I encourage people from all over the city to participate and think about a major institution, what it should look like and its role here in Tacoma Park, and glad that we have a nice working relationship to try to get this consultation process underway. We're also advertising for them a Montgomery College Presidential Dialogue Series, and this is, I'm thinking that the Presidential Dialogue is the president of Montgomery College, called Civility in Action: Dialogues Across Difference. There's a meeting that is going to be held on Tuesday, February 28th, at 7:00 PM in the Montgomery College Tacoma Park Silver Spring Cultural Arts Center, and it includes Dr. Pollard, who's the president, as well as pastors Chris and Dennis Wiley of Covenant Baptist United Church of Christ, to talk about reconciliation and civility in this time. And so we're letting people know that that's a local event that's occurring. I'd like to answer Councilmember Mail's question that, I'm hoping to get that out in the next week, I'm sorry, it has been delayed, for the lobbyists for Montgomery County.
How long do you have to do it?
Usually three weeks, yeah. And to Councilmember Kovar's questions about is a community shredding plan, we've not really done those so much in the past, every once in a while, there's been something, we'll find out if there's one that is coming up. I don't know anything about the WSC project, so on Valley View and Willow, so we will investigate, and I appreciate the information about the yellow curb painting desired for Tulip Avenue.
Great. And I realize we have forgot to mention that the last meeting regarding the feasibility for Piney Branch Elementary School is also on Tuesday, February 28th, and that begins at 6:30 in the media center at Piney Branch.
And if I might, it's, that process actually, I think, seems to be well-received at this point, they've really been a lot of discussion, a lot of advance each time. I know that there are several options that are being considered, some keeping a pool in the Piney Branch Elementary School and some not, and so certainly urge people to go online to see the updated information about it, or attend the meetings.
Great. All right, now we'll move to legislative items. This is an update on bills that are moving in Annapolis. I'll turn it over to Councilmember Smith first. Oh, sorry. Yeah, yeah. Right ahead.
Just one question for you, in regards to the Tacoma Junction redevelopment meetings, I communicated with the deputy city manager, this may be a more appropriate question for him, is it true that the committee members, for the committee that's composed of community members, are theoretically tasked with advertising these meetings, or meaning, are they going to take it upon themselves to do that since they're ward representatives, or not really?
You know, they certainly recommend how some of the information gets out, and it's part of their job to recognize and urge different mechanisms to get the word out, identify how to best get that word out to people. We're also trying to help out.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Great. All right, now Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to urge my colleagues to testify on the highway user revenue bills. There's one hearing on February 28th at 1:00 PM, and the other hearing will be March 2nd, that's a Thursday. So please, if you can testify, let Jesse know so that we can get you up to Annapolis. If you, if you don't want to testify, but you just want to show your support, that's great also. I mean, this is, like I said earlier, the eighth, ninth year that we've tried to get highway user revenue restored to municipalities, and every year, the General Assembly has said no. Let me talk about some of the bills that we discussed last week at the Legislative Committee. We, if you want to take notes, I'll give you the bill number. SB 463, Business Regulation, Limited Residential Lodging, the sponsor is Senator Conway. This bill deals with Airbnb. That is an issue throughout the state. The MML Legislative Committee is supporting with amendments. Our biggest concern is making sure that we're at the table and don't have the state take over how Airbnb should be licensed in municipalities. Right now with this bill, if you read the language of it, the state wants all of the regulations to go through them, and municipalities do not want that, because some want Airbnb and a lot do not want the service. HB 935, it's cross-fired as SB 93, Hotel Rental Tax, Accommodations Intermediary Collection Requirement. This is sponsored by Delegate Washington. We are supporting this bill. Let me give you a brief summary of the bill. For the purpose of requiring an accommodations intermediary that collects and remits for state sales and use tax from the use of certain accommodations to collect and remit certain taxes on certain transient charges in certain counties. This is another Airbnb bill. We're trying to make sure that if we can tax Airbnb, in Airbnb, those people that use it, if you look on their website, they do have a page that tells you how to make sure the municipalities do not tax the users. So state regulations are coming through the General Assembly to try to figure out how municipalities in the states can start charging Airbnb, because all the other hotels, whether you stay at the Marriott, the Wyndham, you have to pay taxes, and it's only fair that Airbnb does the same. HB 954, Foreclosed Property Registry, Updated Information Notice to Local Governments, this is sponsored by Delegate Homes, the Legislative Committee is supporting this bill. This bill is requiring the Department of Labor Licensing and Regulation to establish procedures that require a foreclosure purchaser to send the department any updates, the information about or relating to the foreclosure purchaser that was submitted in the initial registration of a residential property. This is very important because there are a lot of foreclosures still in Maryland, municipalities are always the last to know what's going on, so we're trying to get as much legislation as possible this session, and there are going to be a number of bills that are coming through so that municipalities know what is happening to these properties. Another bill, HB 1074, Court Sanctuary Programs, Citizens Standing to Seek Injunction, sponsored by Delegate McDonough, the Legislative Committee opposes this bill. Let me read you what this bill is about. Providing that a citizen of the United States who is a resident of the state shall have standing to file suit in the appropriate circuit court against any elected official who creates or maintains a sanctuary program in violation of the Federal Immigration and Nationality Act for an injunction against the sanctuary program. So the battle lines have been drawn in the state, those people that want to support sanctuary cities and those people that do not want this to happen. So the Legislative Committee as a whole is opposing this, but there are members of the General Assembly that do want to penalize elected officials if you support sanctuary cities. HB 1079, Roadways Crossing by Pedestrians, of roadways, authority of local jurisdictions, this is sponsored by Delegate McMillan, the Legislative Committee is supporting this. This is authorizing local jurisdictions to regulate the crossing by pedestrians of roadways between adjacent intersections at which traffic control signals are not in Let me just, I mean, there are a whole bunch of bills I could talk about, let me just skip to a couple more that you guys might find interesting. Oh, SB 883, Municipal Elections, Voting by Individuals Not Lawfully Present in the United States, and this is sponsored by Senator Semenier, the Legislative Committee has opposed this bill, and this would go against our current legislation that we have in the city of Tacoma Park. This bill says that it prohibits individuals who are not lawfully present in the United States from voting in municipal elections, and providing that if a municipality allows individuals who are residents of the municipality but are not citizens of the United States to vote in its municipal elections, the municipality should verify the lawful presence of each individual in the United States before the individual votes. So whether it's sanctuary cities or Airbnb, there are a lot of big issues before the General Assembly this year, and it's not over, so you have to be vigilant to make sure that some of these bills don't get passed. But there are legislators in this state that want the sanctuary city ordinances to be an issue. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, great. Now, moving on to bills that the city is taking a position on, we have a couple of other things to discuss this week. For the council members, it's in your blue folders. So this week, there is a new bill that we did not discuss last week, HB 532, SB 1133, this is an election law qualification of voters to show proof of identity. This has a hearing on February 23rd at 1:00 PM. We would look to, given our, our own voting procedures in Tacoma Park, to oppose this bill, and I'm asking council whether or not at this time they would like to take a position on this bill. So, so anyone have any questions on this one, or?
We oppose.
They're opposed, okay. All those in favor of opposing, oh, I guess since Councilmember Kovar is on the phone, we should do just a quick.
I'm trying to even out the sheet, but I'm not sure if Councilmember Kovar would have it.
Councilmember Kovar, do you have the sheet of the bills that we're discussing this evening?
I actually don't.
Oh, no.
I don't have, I don't have anything new, I have what was in the packet previously.
All right, so, okay. Councilmember Mail, you can.
I wanted to comment that in theory, I'm in favor of voter ID laws if IDs are provided by government universally and free, because there are many residents in the country, particularly lower-income residents, residents who come out of prison, who have difficulty getting access to a government-provided identification, which is critical to getting access to lots of services. So in a different world, we would have easy access to those government-issued IDs, and then it would be something you could use in an election system to deal with, you know, very minor levels of fraud. But lacking the ability to provide the ID, and lacking the willingness of government to provide free IDs, then it becomes a barrier that's used to keep people from voting. So I'm happy to support opposition, but just recognizing there is a different solution to get both things done.
Okay. All those in favor of the council taking a position of opposing this bill, please, please raise your hand. That's all here. Councilmember Kovar, you don't have this in front of you, but would you like to abstain from this?
I'm opposed to.
Oh, you're opposed to, okay. So is you, Naz.
Yes.
Oppose. The next is SB 0842 and HB 1354, this is Voter Registration Integrity Act of 2017. This is Voter Registration Integrity Act of 2017. This would require a jury commissioner to provide prospective jury information concerning individuals who are not citizens of the U.S. to the State Board of Elections. Again, given our policies here in the city, this would be one that would be consistent for us to oppose. Any questions on this one?
Okay, I don't quite understand it. So if someone gets called to be on a jury, they show up in court, and then subsequently they figure out that they're not a citizen, and then the jury commissioner would have to inform regardless of whether they were a green card holder or...
I will turn over to our city clerk.
I can provide some clarification. So it is already the practice that if you get called for jury duty and you're not a citizen, the Board of Elections is notified that you were on the list by mistake, and then the Board of Elections does whatever they do. They notify you that you shouldn't be registered, and they take care of it. This bill would also require that that list be sent to the state's attorney for prosecution. So it goes beyond what is done now.
Yeah, okay. Oppose.
All right. All those opposing this one? Please raise your hand. All right, you can't do that one, this one? Do you have to abstain?
I just have to abstain because it has to provide information.
Okay, so Councilmember Karashi is abstaining. Councilmember Kovar?
I oppose the bill.
Okay. So those are, those two, and then the other two that we just recently received, one is HB 1356. This is regarding WSSC and entry into public roadways. This provides municipalities the ability to drop regulations concerning WSSC entry into or use of specified public roadways, and requiring that the regulations be adopted after consultation with the, with WSSC. I don't know if the city clerk had any more information on this one?
I do not.
You're not?
I could.
Councilmember Smith, yes?
I would just say that this bill is part of the Montgomery MML Chapter Priority, and we asked Delegate Gilchrist to sponsor this bill. But it's not cross filed, so I don't know how successful it's going to be.
All right. All those in favor of, or any other questions on this one? Okay.
I don't understand the bill.
All right, would you like to hold it until next week so you have a chance to look at it?
Yeah.
Okay, let's hold that one until next week. I believe it's in our Dropbox that the city clerk provides us, and then we can take a position. There's no hearing yet on that one. The next is HB 1374. That's been filed by our delegate, Janelle Wilkins. It's State Highway Administration Neighbor Notification Act. This would require State Highway to send a specified notice to nearby property owners at least two weeks in advance of a planned construction on state highway. Requires the administration to send the notice on behalf of specified persons involved in the planned construction, requiring the notice to include specified information, and to send another notice to nearby property owners if planned construction is postponed. This one does have a hearing set in March, but also this is a new one for us, and more information is in the Dropbox. So maybe we'll hold this one, since the hearing isn't until March, until next week, so people have time to review that. Is that all right? All right, so if you could please review that one, and the city clerk will update us if there are any other bills to look at before next week. I just want to also note that last week, we did take a position on a number of environmental bills that are moving forward in Annapolis, prohibition on fracking, energy efficiency programs, electric vehicles and recharging equipment, Clean Car Acts of 2017, and keep antibiotics effective. We will have resolutions next week regarding our positions on that, but we voted last week to support or oppose the fracking, but support the others. In addition, we have said we are supporting the Maryland Trust Act, and our city attorney testified on that on Tuesday afternoon. Councilmember Kovar is going to testify on that on February 28th, and we'll have a resolution on that, even though it is consistent with our sanctuary city policy. Given the gravity of the issue and the importance of it right now, we felt it was important for the council to be on record with a resolution supporting the Trust Act. So I think unless the city clerk has any other items for us on, or the deputy city manager on legislative items, we're good for this week?
The last one, the HB 598, the counties and municipal corporations prohibiting sanctuary laws. I think the question was, does anyone, is there any interest in testifying on that on March 7th at 1:00 in the House Judiciary Committee?
And councilmembers can look at their calendars and respond on that. We took a position on that last week. All right, great. So just look for emails with updates on legislative items. Now we'll move to our first voting item, is the first reading ordinance approving extension of pilots' payment in lieu of taxes. I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Turn my thing on?
No, I need to turn you on, I'm sorry.
Thank you. There was a, I'm sorry? Councilmember Kovar? There was a presentation last week on the proposal to approve the extension of the payment in lieu of taxes agreement for 8624 to 8626 Flower Avenue, for 1001, 1003, and 1005 University Boulevard, and for 641 Houston Court. All of these properties are owned by Montgomery Housing Partnership. The requested extension and the waiver would be a waiver of 50% of local property taxes for a period of 10 years. That will allow Montgomery Housing Partnership to keep rents at these properties at affordable levels, continue needed residence support services, address ongoing maintenance issues, and begin to repay debt incurred to acquire and renovate the properties. The ordinances, I think, are fairly straightforward. The relief of taxes would mean that the city would forego about $120,000 over a period of 10 years for these properties. The ordinances are straightforward, and you saw them last week. There was an interest in having some kind of a accommodation for refugees in properties that would be issued a pilot. What we would like to do is to come back next week with the second reading of the ordinances with an accompanying resolution that would address this on a more general nature for properties receiving pilots. So I just wanted to mention that that's something that we'll be bringing forward to you next week. That's all.
Great. Before I ask someone to move this ordinance, does anybody have any questions? Councilmember Mail?
Yeah, I guess in the past, I've seen requests for us to forego property taxes associated with some specific improvement being made in the building. And when I looked at this proposal, I guess I find it disappointing that there's nothing clear that we get or residents get in exchange. And I'm assuming, and it would be actually helpful to have numbers on this, I'm assuming that these three buildings have approximately 100 apartments altogether, but just for the illustrious purposes, let's say there's 100 apartments worth in these three buildings. That's the equivalent of $120 per apartment per year. I very much doubt that that's all getting translated into the rents of those residents. My guess is there's probably far more apartments than that, so it's probably more like $30 or $40 per apartment. And I just wonder if that's a good use of $120,000 that could be $120,000 we deposit into the housing fund, or it could be $120 we provide in home repair assistance. So to me, there's no, I'm open-minded about it, but I don't, I'm not convinced that there's a really clear purpose from the Montgomery Housing Partnership to providing assistance like this. Rather, it seems like, from the material presented, that it's simply an easy thing to ask for again, that, you know, is beneficial to them for obvious reasons, but it's not clear to me that it benefits our residents, our residents who need affordable housing, our stock of affordable housing in terms of the quality of that housing. So I just, I'm just not persuaded for first reading, so I plan to vote in opposition.
Any other questions? And I will note, we did have a work session on this last week, and a representative from MHP was here to answer questions, and I'm just honestly not going to be able to recall the answers to some of those questions.
He talked a little bit about it, but I think, I think the major issue, you know, is to help their bottom line, since they have their various acquisition costs to be repaid, and a certain, he did identify a specific amount.
He identified some things, and unfortunately, I'm just not recalling them now, but I think we could probably go back to the tape or ask our head. Unfortunately, our head of housing went home ill today, so she couldn't be here. So I think in preparation for a second reading, Councilmember Mail's questions could be answered, but I did want to recognize that there was a representative from MHP here last week and did answer questions regarding this. Councilmember Smith?
He did say that. They couldn't do any more work because the properties had recently been renovated. Because that was my question also. We're going to give this to you, what are we getting? And he couldn't come up with anything.
I mean, just from a policy perspective, if we're approving basically just an automatic re-up after 10 years for one pilot proposal, then what it looks like is we're setting policy to do that for every building every time we get a pilot request. And so I'm not clear that that's, again, the best use of our housing funds.
Okay. Councilmember Schultz?
The individual was Jim Miller, who was the asset manager for MHP, just for the record.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? Oh, Councilmember Siemens.
I just wanted to move the...
Thank you very much.
Second.
Councilmember Siemens moved, Councilmember Smith second. Since Councilmember Kovar is on the phone, why don't we just do a roll call on this?
Sure. Councilmember Kovar?
Yes.
Are you voting in favor?
I'm voting in favor, yes.
Councilmember Mail?
Opposed.
Councilmember Karashi?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. All right, now we have some resolutions regarding state legislation. The first resolution is a resolution supporting HB 285, and SB 265 is the Washington Metro Rail Safety Commission Membership Act. Just as a reminder, we discussed this last week and decided to support it. The importance of this, particularly for us in Tacoma Park, is that it would require two of the members of the board to be from Montgomery County or Prince George's County on this.
Two or one?
I think it's two. It's two.
It would alternate.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Alternate between?
Between the two counties.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. All right, would someone like to move the resolution?
Someone.
Councilmember Smith moved, Councilmember Karashi second. Any discussion or questions? Okay, again, sorry to make you do a roll call, but I think it's probably easier.
Councilmember Karashi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes, aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Mail?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Kovar? Councilmember Kovar?
Did we lose Councilmember Kovar?
I'm aye on that one.
Okay, thank you.
And Mayor Stewart?
Yes. All right, the next one is Resolution HB 979, Property Tax Credit for Public Safety Officers. This would authorize, under certain conditions, a county or municipality to grant a property tax credit to a public safety officer who resides in the jurisdiction and is employed there full-time. Would someone like to move this resolution?
Someone.
Councilmember Mail, second.
Can I ask a point of clarification? Does the statute define what a public service officer is?
Public safety.
Or public safety officer is? I mean, I hope that our police department qualifies.
They do, they do.
But I just wanted to make sure, who else in this city could potentially qualify? Do we know?
Firefighters, but...
Parking ticket.
I'd like to move for an exception to that person. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. So the police and fire are covered on that.
Yes.
Okay, that's all, that's all.
But the police, the fire officials are not employed by the city of Tacoma Park, so we could not apply that to them.
Right, understood. Thank you.
All right, any other questions on this one? All right, do the roll call.
Councilmember Karashi?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Mail?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Aye. All right, the next is Resolution for HB 238, Housing, Workforce Housing Grant, Mandatory Funding. This was one we supported. This would require the governor to appropriate at least $4 million to the workforce housing grant program in fiscal years 2019 to 2023. Would someone like to move this one?
Does it move?
Councilmember Mail, second?
Second.
Councilmember Karashi, any questions on this one? Just do the roll call, please.
Councilmember Karashi?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Mail?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Aye. And then finally, we have a resolution that covers supporting HB 257 and SB 359. That's the Maryland Meals for Achievement for Teens Act of 2017, and then HB 287, SB 361, the Hunger Free Schools Act of 2017, and HB 288, SB 360, Free School Meals for Students from Low and Middle Income Families Act. Would someone like to move this one?
I'll move it.
Councilmember Schultz, a second?
Second.
Councilmember Mail, any questions on this one?
Just one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Why are these three being grouped? Is this because they were all put together by the same person? Lori?
They're just similar.
They're all Delegate Hickson's bills, and Senator Madaleno are the two sponsors. And they, I had grouped them because they fit together, that they're all very similar, and they are a package.
Okay. That's good enough, thank you.
Can you do the roll?
Councilmember Karashi?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Mail?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Kovar?
Yes.
Councilmember Kovar?
I'm aye. Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, now we will get to our work sessions. The first is a discussion of proposal to create a scatter garden.
Hi, thank you for having us speak, and thank you for everybody who came to speak and spoke so eloquently about the scatter garden. I'm going to just, I crossed out a couple of my paragraphs already, because people really covered it better than I had, so I won't take very much of your time, but I am going to share some specific ideas of what we have in mind, some of the locations that we're thinking of, and some specifics, what we're asking of the city particularly. What we have in mind is really simple. We want to select a park in Tacoma Park that the city owns and already maintains, and designate it as a memorial garden where people can have a plaque to remember a person who has passed away, and they can also, if they choose, scatter that person's cremated remains. We're asking for minimal contribution from the city. Basically requesting only the land. Nope, whoops. Oh. Wait a minute. Yes, and then full screen? How do you get full screen? Yes, okay, from the city of Tacoma Park, use of the park, and continued maintenance on the grounds as they are already being maintained, and in the same fashion, and the city would continue to own that land. We'd also ask that there be a portal on the city website to link to a page for the memorial garden. That's it. We're planning a fundraising campaign to entirely cover the development of the garden. We will raise money to put up a sign designating, there, to put up a sign, basically, to designate it as a memorial garden. And then as we, if we can raise more money, we'd put up a bench, depending on how much money we raise, would look somewhat like, something like that. And we, let's see, we have, we have to raise enough to put in a bench for quite reflection, possibly with some additional landscaping to give the bench area some more seclusion. We also have several ideas on how to integrate some way to memorialize people with individual plaques, depending also on how much money we raise from the individual donors. The simplest idea that we have is, with the least initial outlay of funds, is for people to be able to purchase a natural garden stone of a standard size, and to be able to put a small brass plaque on that stone that they would then place into the garden. And these are just some examples of what those can look like. And these are just some examples of what those can look like. Once the garden is open, people would go to a city... Once the garden is open, people go through a city website portal to pay fees for registering, and to purchase a plaque through a selected vendor. We have talked to several vendors. We have one in mind that would work with us to guide people on approved designs and rock sizes. We'd have a maximum size for a rock that people could have, and that vendor would be able to confirm that people have registered and paid a fee through the website. The fee would go towards incidental future expenses or improvements. It's important to note here that the website would also advise people about certain limitations to Tacoma Park's responsibility, such as that routine maintenance... There we go. That routine maintenance might shift the location of ashes, that Tacoma Park reserves the right to move memorial stones, and that Tacoma Park is not responsible for the loss of or damage to stones or plaques. And I think that'll be clearly displayed on the website, and when people register, they would check that they read and that they understand those kind of limitations on the responsibilities of the city. I'd like to take a moment to point out just how common a city service this is. Thousands of people in the U.S., thousands of cities in the U.S. have... Have city-owned and operated places to memorialize the dead. Here are just a few city websites that I found. They have the access to the cemetery right on their website. And there are many more, hundreds. Our neighbor in Greenbelt has one, also Fairfax, Centerville, Williamsport, Fredericksburg. These are much more elaborate than what we're proposing. We are looking at simply a memorial garden where people can, if they choose, also scatter ashes. But I wanted to point out that it's a common and historically a very important function of a city to designate a place for deceased citizens, one of the earliest acts often of a newly established town. And the websites of these cities ring with the pride of their history. They frequently contain memorials to the city's most prominent citizens. Walking through them is like a journey into a town's past. But we're not talking about creating a full-service cemetery, which is a much more elaborate responsibility. This scaled-down version is much simpler, a modest way for residents of Tacoma Park to memorialize the dead who lived here, who feel that Tacoma Park is not simply a residence, but a home. The benefits to our community would be immense. The sense of legacy our departed citizens leave to the city, the grounding of continuity in our community spirit, and peace of mind for our citizens to know where we'll finally rest, as many of the people who spoke today pointed out, I think very movingly. This garden is for our children, our children's children, and all future residents of Tacoma Park. In truth, people probably already scatter ashes at favorite places in Tacoma Park. This would simply formalize what is already done and give people a way to include the names and dates of their loved ones to be remembered. Finally, I'd like to talk about locations. At the suggestion of the council, we met with Suzanne Ledlow and Daryl Braithwhite at Public Works and Mike Welsh, the city gardener. Mike Welsh used to work at the National Arboretum, and he told us that people scattered ashes at the arboretum all the time, and National Arboretum had no problem with that. He, so he was very encouraging. We're also grateful for the guidance of the Commemoration Committee to identify suitable locations. We have had basically five criteria for a, for a good spot. That it's owned and maintained by the city of Tacoma Park, that it has the support of the immediate neighbors to the park, that the adaptation would be affordable for a private fundraising campaign, that it's in a good location, and finally, that it is an underutilized park. We looked at dozens of possibilities, or a dozen possibilities, and narrowed those down to three that we think show the most promise. The first one is Upper Portal at Eastern and Piney Branch. It has mature plantings all the way around, giving it a very nice sense of seclusion once you enter. Kind of, it has a very open area in the center. It's in a prominent historic location across from Katie Lee, and it already has several historic markers on stones similar to what we're suggesting, although not as large. So, it would need very little in terms of adaptation, just a bench in this middle area, pretty much. We talked to many of the neighbors and put flyers around at the neighbors' houses that are adjacent to the park and didn't meet with any objections so far. It's a park that also gets very little use, other than an occasional dog walker. We also like Stuart Armstrong Park, which is at Piney Branch and Eastern, I'm sorry, which is at Philadelphia and Holly, on Philadelphia, between Philadelphia and the elementary school. This one was suggested specifically by Mike Welsh. It's very nice, natural woods with plenty of room for the memorial stones idea that we have. It's close to the municipal heart of the city, making it feel much a part of the city. It would need very little in terms of adaption. Its maintenance requirements as a natural wood would be very minimal. We talked to many of the neighbors and also put flyers around there and didn't, and just meant, didn't meet any opposition. And it also gets very little use. Here's some more pictures of it. It also has a bunch of stones all around it, much as we're thinking of, so it'd be stones much like this, with, just with little plaques on them. The third one is Thomas Siegler Park. It has a strong historic connection to the town. It's in a prominent location, and yet secluded. We've talked to many of the neighbors and had a very good response from them. We even have one of the neighbors joined us tonight. It was also the unanimous choice at our small community meeting that we had two weeks ago. We voted on these three parks, and everyone liked this one the best. It's also firmly established as a park in perpetuity. Thomas Siegler is not going anywhere. There are some caveats as a snapshot, as a, for, of a particular historic time. This would be adding a modern component that some might feel is antithetical to its purpose. This is a concern expressed by representatives of historic Tacoma. However, the possibly, just, the idea of just using simple garden stones with plaques might ameliorate some of those concerns. So, any, we feel that any one of these three parks would be an excellent memorial garden for our citizens. In closing, I want to say that the committee realizes the ongoing nature of our commitment. We're in the process of incorporating as a nonprofit, and our continuing committee will monitor the website, communicate with the vendor, and find new vendors if necessary, troubleshoot issues that come up, organize volunteers bring cleanups, and provide a sympathetic and helpful ear to bereaved citizens in our community. Our committee and many of our fellow citizens of Tacoma Park urge the city to compassionately consider the great solace and peace of mind that this modest proposal could bring to our citizens, with minimal financial burden on the city now and into our shared future.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I'm going to actually kick off the questions on the middle park that you talked about on Philly and Holly. Did you happen to talk to the Tacoma Park Elementary School about that location? Because I do believe, if I'm not mistaken, sometime they take classes out there, so...
There are some signs, yes. I did not, we did not talk to them, no.
Just one, because I think that, it used to be, my kids are big now, but years ago, Mr. Hutton, who lives on Prince George's Avenue, who teaches there, used to teach a science class, and he used to take his students out there to do different things, to do experiments and other things. So, I think as we are exploring that as an option, we should just think about how much the elementary school uses that location.
Right, right. Although, we're not thinking of really altering it in any way, it would still be perfectly useful for that purpose. And we, I think for all of these three parks, they would look, they would continue to look just as they do. It would have a sign that would say something about it being a memorial garden, but other than that, it would continue looking as it does, except perhaps maybe it would have a bench. And then there would be these stones with plaques around. So, I don't know, for elementary schoolchildren, maybe it would be a helpful lesson in the whole cycle of life thing.
We'll leave it at that. Let's see, Councilmember Karashi?
I think that that's the park where my daughter took her school pictures this year, so I think it's worth communicating with them if this goes forward. The first criteria that you listed of your wish list, I forget what the term was used, was that it be property owned by Tacoma Park. You heard Mr. Arthur David Olson's comments earlier. Why does it have to be property owned by Tacoma Park? Obviously, you wouldn't be coming before us if it wasn't property owned by Tacoma Park, but have you explored, a lot of questions I get from residents, doing this privately on private land, and why is this property on Tacoma Park? I'm just trying to understand the impetus behind why the group decided to do it this way.
I think it would be cost prohibitive for us to raise the kind of money that we would need to purchase a plot of land in Tacoma Park and then pay yearly taxes on that. It does not seem feasible.
Thank you.
Another question I had is, can you go into more detail? So, if the, there is a place on the city website that then took people to another website? Is that what you're thinking about at this point?
Well, whether it would be a page in the city website or a totally different website, I'm not sure how that would work. But yes, it would be a page that would be specific for the memorial garden that you would link to through the city website, preferably. Guess it could work a different way, but that seems to be, like it would be the most, easiest for people to find it. And then, through that, on that website, there would be a link to a vendor where they could get information about how to get a stone, how to purchase the stone from that vendor and the plaque, and then, and then they would be registered as, the person who passed away would be registered on like a database of people in the garden.
Great. And I can't believe, I can't remember if this came up the last time you all were here. And first of all, I didn't say thank you, I just thank you for coming back and doing all this work. Apologies. But have you talked to the, I always get their name wrong, the Commemoration Commission?
Mm-hmm.
Did they have any reactions or thoughts on it?
They helped us quite a bit finding a garden that was appropriate. They made a lot of suggestions about that.
Great. Councilmember Schultz?
And they've been, they've been supportive of it.
Councilmember Schultz?
My feeling is that I'd like to keep the city out of this as much as possible. I think it would be to your benefit as well as ours. I, I'm not comfortable with the idea when we hear you say, oh, it's not going to cost the city anything. That's probably because you don't know what it costs to do these things. And the fact that it is a, puts the city into a permanent obligation, talk about in perpetuity, that would be a definite, you know, an inappropriate word. Have you given consideration to contacting the Parks Division of the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Organization? Because they have got hundreds of acres of woods in the city, that's in our city, that, and they maintain it, and it's, much of it is just naturally wild. And, I mean, it's within the boundaries. The land is not owned by the city of Tacoma Park, but I'm not thinking that it, for the family of the deceased person, that it matters who literally owns the land. And you could probably put a bench there and rearrange some stuff, and nobody wouldn't care much, and the city would not have a problem. I don't have, well, let me, let you answer that question, I'm sorry.
I have contacted Montgomery County about using land, like for instance, along Sligo And I was not encouraged by their response. They, they sent me their, their list of priorities for development of parks and said that this shouldn't fit with their criteria. So, and I haven't pursued it much farther than that.
My sense is, is that you're not trying to create a, what we, what we would normally think of as a park. You're just trying to find a rustic area that you would do as little as possible, actually, to modify, you know, and modifying it from what your slides show. As I know, when we talked, the Tacoma Dogs approach, that, the Parks Division, about putting a dog park there, they got all kinds of flack about all kinds of things, but that, you know, that was a whole different order of magnitude. I just would encourage you to do that, or try and pursue that a little bit, a little bit further, because it seems to me that the creation of a nonprofit organization is the way to go, which is what you're doing. Having a link, having your own link, your own website that would have a link connected to the city's website seemed perfectly benign to the city, to me. And then, that way, the organization can take responsibility for collecting the fees and sustaining the space and using the money as you wish, and you don't have to deal with the city at all, except in a minor administrative way. Just, it's just my comment at this point.
Councilmember Kovar, do you want to go next?
Sure. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay, thanks. I do want to say, first of all, that I respect the work that the proponents have done and the commitment that they have to this. And I think I understand some of the motives. I personally do get solace from cemeteries where I have loved ones who are buried. And there are, to be honest about it, a number of one residents who are in support of this, and I certainly see that. I'm not, though, totally convinced. I have some skepticism, and I just want to give a few of the reasons why. One, I recognize that the cost issue can be dealt with via the fees, but there's still, if we're responsible for maintaining it, staff person does that, they can't do something else. And so, there is a time and resource issue there. And I also think, as Councilmember Schultz said, if it's not a question of a nonprofit organization being established to purchase the land itself, if the reason is because it's too expensive to purchase the land, that means that there's some real value in us making land available for this purpose. And I also think that there were a number of comments about how it's really only going to be a small number of people. Well, if it's really only going to be a small number of people, I think there's a question there as to whether it's something that we should take on. Mr. Olson mentioned the religious objections, and that's something that we ought to think about. I don't know if that's determinative, and I would also say if there's a specific vendor, I assume if we were going to do this, it would have to be done through some sort of RFP for it. I was surprised, number one, maybe I should be happy, I didn't know to see that all the three sites were in Ward One. And it just, that makes me feel a little bit uncomfortable as to why I would only be here. It seems like that makes it kind of an exclusive thing. And honestly, of the five criteria, I didn't hear parking, and I've already heard from people who said parking's bad enough on Tullip. I think I already mentioned that today. And so, that gets to the question of what the parking would be like, either around the Thomas Siegler area, where parking's really rough already, over by T-P-E-S, where I don't think it's really, there is any parking, except in the, in the school parking area, depending on the time of day. And it's a fairly tight area over by the Portals Park as well. So, I guess what I'm wondering is how it turned out that they were all in Ward One, and what's supposed to happen to people who want to do this, who live, say, for example, in, Councilmember Schultz? in Councilmember Schultz or Councilmember Smith's area, and they would have to drive over and, you know, I'm not sure where they would end up parking. So all of that, it just makes me skeptical. And I guess more broadly, and I'll finish up with this, I can understand why people want to do it. I'm just not sure, more philosophically, I guess, if it is a, something that's a municipal function necessarily for us. You know, we've got a lot of issues like sanctuary issue, we've talked about, and so on. And I'm not sure when we're grappling with those, if we need to take this on. But even setting all that aside, is this just something that the city should do? I haven't heard really a convincing argument as to why it should be. So I know I talked a lot of issues out there, and I'm sorry to have to do it over the phone. Happy to take responses on any of those things if there are any. Thanks.
Well, I think I can respond to a couple of those, if I may. Well, the maintenance is, those parks are already being maintained to some degree. And the, we're not asking to alter the parks in any great detail that would make the maintenance different. The maintenance would stay the same. So the cities will continue to maintain it in the manner that they are now. So that is, it seems to me to not be an added expense or burden on the city since it's what they're already doing. Different from, for instance, if we had a private garden that we had to, one, come up with the money to buy the land, two, come up with the money on a yearly basis to pay the taxes, and three, come up with a maintenance crew. So I think that the maintenance is not a continuing financial, is not a financial burden on the city, is what it seems to me. I think that we would also, there would be, I think we'd get a lot of enthusiasm for volunteers that have relatives that they have scattered in the park to help us out on spring cleaning that we would, that we would organize this volunteer effort. A lot of the parks in Tacoma Park already get that kind of volunteer effort, so we would contribute to it in that way. As for the number of people that would use it, I don't think that over the time that we're talking about, the many coming decades, that it would be a small number of people. About 20 people a year die in Tacoma Park with Maryland's cremation rates. That's about 10 people who are cremated, and some percentage of them would use the garden. And they would be our, people who have lived here their whole life and have a big, and have, you know, these are our most cherished citizens, you know, that have lived here 50 years and would want to be in this park. So I don't think that it's a small number of people that we should disregard in that way, that it's not going to be used enough. But for the parking issue, well, from what I understand of how these things usually happen when someone is scattering ashes, they tend to be small groups of people. It's not like the entire funeral comes out to the scatter garden. Usually, it is some space removed in time from a memorial service, which might be closer to a person's death, and those are, you know, large affairs, and there's, you know, a memorial service. But the scattering of ashes usually is immediate family members, really. I think typically, it's a small group of people. They fit in one car perhaps, or two cars, and we're talking, you know, a half a dozen times a year, a car or two. I really don't think that parking is going to create a problem for the neighbors with massive amounts of cars parking on the street all the time. It's just not typically the way these things happen. So... And as far as the religious objection, that this is a garden, that there are some religions that don't cremate and don't consider that part of their religion, that's why we're really referring to this as a memorial garden where people can choose also to scatter ashes. This can be a place where, if you have a connection to Tacoma Park and you want to have a stone and a plaque in this place among your fellow Tacoma Park citizens that you spent your whole life with, that of all different religions and all different walks of life, and you're coming together and this is the place that we're remembering, and if you choose, and if you, and if you were scattered, or were cremated, then you could also place your ashes there. But I don't think it would be exclusionary in any way. This is a memorial garden that anyone can use, and if they also have cremated remains that they want to scatter there, that's available for them.
Thank you. And I'll just say my comments now, Miss Berman, and pick up on what you just said there about this being a memorial garden, because I do think we do have memorial gardens in the city. And to answer the question that was posed, what, you know, why the city, being a partner and looking at this, for me, it's when I do think of it as a memorial garden, whether or not people would scatter their ashes or not. And I think, I think too, the places that we do have in the city, like across the street, where we have the Veterans Memorial and the Boy Scouts go each year and lay a wreath on Veterans Day to remember those who we've lost in our communities who have fought on behalf of us. So I, I think, I think there's a lot of details to work out, because I do share some of my colleagues' concerns about the responsibility for the city and what we might be tying future councils to. But I think some of the things that you said tonight regarding being able to flush out what, you know, people would have to sign on and say, you know, stones may be moved, and the maintenance would be the same as what it is in the parks now. For me, those are some of the details that we could work out to minimize the responsibility on behalf of the community. But I just wanted to kind of chime in there that I think, for me, thinking of it more as a memorial garden where people can go. I know the last time you were here, I mentioned this, that my father-in-law, who very much loved Tacoma Park and lived here, we purchased a brick in the front of this building when that was available. And so when I walk into this building, I get to look at his name each time. And I understand that that is, that type of connection is what all of you are looking for as you advocate for this. So I will turn it over now to Councilmember Mayo.
Thank you for being here tonight and your work on this, and other residents' work on it as well. Some general comments and then some questions for you. Through the Commemoration Commission that was referred to earlier tonight, we already have a policy and a process to deal with putting a name on a bench and putting a name on a plaque. And partly what I hear you all describing is just that. It's a, it's a physical space that is a more natural setting in which one would be putting plaques with someone's name on it. And that, that seems to me policy that we've already worked out. The difference here is that one is also scattering ashes on the surface of the ground and the location, and given the generally liberal treatment of ashes across the country in all the places you mentioned in national parks, that there don't really seem to be any issues there either. So, you know, it seems to me, we, I think of this as, as an extension of the programs and policies we created through our Commemoration Commission and the discussions that council had at the time with the public. The, the opportunity is to find a natural setting, because that seems to be what everyone is interested in, where there's space for something like this. I think the parking concerns are, you know, valid, just like they would be for any other use, just like they would be for a bench that we were naming with no ashes associated with it, whatever. Someone might want to go take their family and see the bench when the plaque was placed on it or the plaque on the ground, right? So it's, it's the same issue. When we had that discussion, there were no conversations about parking that we as a council had that I recall when we, when we set up the commission. The commission itself may have had, or the...
The commission?
I think it's a commission.
Committee?
Commission.
I think it's commemoration.
Commemoration Commission?
Commission.
Those guys. They may have had discussions about parking, but I've not, I've not heard about them. So, you know, I think we should be smart about it, but I don't, I don't think it's a, it's a really big issue. One of the things you suggested was that the city would not be responsible for moving the stones. If the stones were moved, that was one of the...
That the city reserved the right to be able to move the stones, yeah.
Yeah. And I think I'd want to be a little more protective of them than that.
Well, I think that you, the city would, there might be good reasons why a stone might be put in a place that's not...
I think you'd want to have policy that said the city's goal is to maintain the stones where placed. However, there may be reasons why they need to be. So like the preferences on keeping them in place, because you go back, your relatives go back 50 years later, you know, where did it go? It would be better to try to maintain the location, I think. The numbers you gave, and I was thinking something similar, like if there were 10 a year, I think we'd want to plan for 10 stones a year for 100 years, 1,000 stones. So, you know, what is the kind of density that people would expect? Because it's not fair to think about the folks today and not think about the folks 100 years from now, your grandchildren wanting to be...
10, 10 might be a bit high. So if 20 people die, 10 people are cremated, and not all of them would come, would buy a stone.
My point would be if we can find a location that would, one can imagine 100 years from now having 1,000 stones in it, and it not feeling like a place that you would no longer want your memorial to be, that that would, that would be one of the criteria for location that I would think about.
Yeah. And then, that's why, that's one of the reasons that I, personally, I really like the Stuart Armstrong one, because it is quite large.
Okay. The, another issue that you might be able to help us look into, which I'm assuming has been covered with municipalities associated with cemeteries in particular, but ADA requirements, Americans with Disabilities Act requirements associated with wheelchair access and other issues in natural settings, to the extent that that's been dealt with by municipalities that have a connection to a burial site, there may be some, some information that you could help provide to us that would be helpful, just to make sure we're treating everyone equally in terms of access to the site. And then I do think, associated with religious traditions, for example, in religions where cremation is simply not allowed or, you know, prohibited by some doctrine or leadership within the church, it's going to be difficult to find a way to accommodate. But for example, the Catholic Church doesn't discourage cremation anymore, but they do discourage scattering as opposed to burying urns.
Yeah.
So it may be helpful for you all to help us figure out whether there are traditions that allow cremation but require certain treatments of cremated remains, and whether we can find a way to be accommodating of those, of those different approaches.
Right. The Catholic Church, they, you're allowed to bury and earn, as you said, but it also has to be on sacred ground. So I think that Catholics who have that kind of connection to their religion would choose a place that has a sacred, yes, a sacred burial with that, with that option. But that doesn't mean that they couldn't then also have a stone.
Sure. Yep, that's right. And then I think there's a, some policy considerations around who would be allowed to have a memorial or marker, and who would be allowed to scatter ashes. And I think the way that I see it at the moment, but totally open to it, but the way I see the issue is that we would not want to discriminate between residents and non-residents. For example, someone who was born here and moved away for their whole life but wanted to have a memorial here, we would have to find a way to treat someone like that. I think we would want to be inclusive.
Yeah. What we were thinking about exactly for that particular point is that, on the website, when you're registering, you would either put in an address of a Tacoma Park address or a designate, a sponsor that lives in Tacoma Park. So if you would, so you would have to have a sponsor that's a resident.
Okay. I think, I think the way I would approach it is, like we do our library card system, a fee for residents and a different fee for non-residents, as a way to allow, you know, single people with no living relatives in Tacoma Park who nonetheless want to come back in this, in this way, you know, access without discriminating. But I don't know what the demand would be in that. That might be the sort of thing that one figures out and then figures out how to adjust over time. I think those are all my questions. Thank you.
Just one, one comment about, the first thing you brought up about the benches, I really like the way you put that, that it is very much an extension of what we already do with the benches and the tree programs and the plaques. The real difference is that this is all together.
Right.
And those are, you know...
Like the, like the bricks out front. The bricks out front and all together.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for all the time that you and your friends have put in to this project and to everybody who's come here tonight and spent the long hours on this issue. You know, I really don't feel strongly either way on this, so I just look at it from a perspective of if we do do this, you know, how do we make it work? And I think you've covered most of the bases. I think there's still some questions about parking in my mind, because I know that although it's probably not something where a lot of people go at once to visit their loved ones, quite often there is a service that does attract a family and friends that could have some parking issues for those, for those times. And then the other thing that I know that your, your group has addressed in the past that hasn't been mentioned tonight, but now that you've been working with the gardener, I would like to hear back from the city gardener on the potential impact of the high levels of pH and sodium in cremation ashes and the effect that that could have on the vegetation in the park that you select. And again, I think I'm optimistic that if you do this, you're going to have a lot of people who are interested, and it may, that may be a problem on the other end with the impact on the, on the vegetation. So I'd like to hear back from the gardener on his understanding. I know they've had some problems in cemeteries with cremation ashes, and that's why I bring it up.
I actually did bring that up with Mike Welsh about, I asked him that specific question about the high levels of essentially bone meal, calcium phosphorus, and that, and that the three gardens we're thinking of have, have a high population of, for instance, azaleas, which like very acid soil, whereas you add bone meal is a base and increases the base. So I asked, I asked what kind of effect that might have on azaleas, and he did not feel that that was a problem. And basically, he said he thought that there would, there was not enough to change the acid level in the soil. And if they felt there was, that it was affecting the acid level, then there were other soil additives that could counteract the base and make them more acid. So he...
I thank you for your time.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you coming out and giving the presentation. Just have a few questions. The location, what about those residents that live in Ward Five that don't drive? How would they get to these locations? I mean, is there general bus service? Is there...
There is bus service. There's also, it's right near the metro, mostly by, mostly bus service, I guess. I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
Or walk, or...
You said that the city should be the sponsor of this, you know, scatter garden, and the one thing that makes me hesitant is whenever the city gets involved in land use, there's a lot more involved than when we initially take on any project. For example, the dog park, that was something that was supposed to be, the city was just going to provide technical support. And we all of a sudden got, and now we basically have built this dog park and now we control it. What happens if we go forward with the scatter garden and the volunteers just dry up? I mean, would the city have to write a grant to the nonprofit that's in charge of this? What would the city's... What would the city's responsibility be if there are no more volunteers to work on this?
Okay. Well, the, the fundraising effort is what will fund the, the initial outlay of costs for any development, as I said, signs, website design, bench area, any kind of hardscaping like that, just, you know, sort of setting up the system. Once that's done, the, the website would need to be maintained, and that's a commitment that I'm personally making to continue that and, and in the, through this nonprofit that we're setting up. And, you know, we would, like any, like many of the nonprofits in Tacoma Park, that, like Historic Tacoma is, you know, a nonprofit foundation, and as, you know, some members move out, new members come in, and, you know, that's, that's, I think that this is a, this particular cause is something that people will be drawn to, to continue to do the work that needs to be done to keep it going, you know, like the, the other nonprofits in Tacoma Park. I mean, this one will have people that have now relatives that they've scattered in this garden, and I think that that will draw their enthusiasm.
If I purchased a stone, right, does the city process that purchase, or do you anticipate a third party?
There would be a third party. So the one vendor that, that I talked to, one in, in Rockville that was really helpful, and he is familiar with this kind of arrangement and has done similar ones through other kinds of facilities, like the church scatter garden that, that he works with. And so the, the website would direct people to them, to, to this Frams Memorial in, in, in Rockville, and he would work with them, he'd guide them on a stone that was within our specifications, and he'd guide them to a plaque that was within our specifications. And they would have to go out there, and, and I guess they could do it all over, over the phone, but they could go, they could go out, select the stone that they want, have the plaque put on, they fabricate it, they transport it back to the person, that, that person will pay the, that vendor for the rock and the plaque, and then take the stone and put it in the garden themselves.
And so what you just want is a link on the city's website that says, "Go to whatever."
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
And then all through, also through that link, that link you would pay a registration fee. And so he, I, and I brought that up to, to, to the representative I talked to there who said, well, that, that he would, in the relationship that he'd established with us, he would ascertain that that person had registered through the city of Tacoma Park before they get a stone.
Okay, so the registration...
So you register through the website and pay a fee to Tacoma Park for the, for the, for the scattering, and then go to the vendor, get your stone, place it in the garden.
So the city would have to process the registration?
Well, I guess that would go through the nonprofit.
Okay.
And then that, and then that, that money would go towards future expenses of the garden, or future improvements.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Christian.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to give you an idea about sort of where I am, and then I have a question. I, particularly given the fact that, again, I appreciate everyone's efforts, I think, particularly given the fact that this is something that individuals on their own can do anywhere in the city, I have initial reservations about allocating something in perpetuity that could be repurposed in the future, because we already don't have enough land for people to buy affordable housing, or let alone have enough parkland for kids to play in. So that's a concern that I have. And Arthur David Olson's comment, I know my colleagues just addressed it, like, the religious aspect of it is really important to me. You know, I grew up in a Muslim household, you don't cremate remains. I might cremate my remains, which brings me to my parking issue. You know, I know that you say it's a small thing, but I, 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 I tell you, if I'm cremated and I'm scattered in this city, there's going to be people here from Pakistan to California. At least I'd like to hope so. So I think that there are those maintenance issues that I think we understandably are sort of mitigating, but I think that they're legitimate. And over time, given the fact that this is a limited space, and there's only, only so many plaques that can go in there, and then you couple that with religious aspect to it, and more importantly, I'll be honest with you all, and I really appreciate your advocacy, the equity aspect of it, if you look at the percentages of African-Americans who cremate versus white folks, there's a stark, stark disparity. This is a majority-minority town. So to me, it seems like people who have the forethought, thankfully, and the wherewithal to advocate for these issues are, but we, in many respects, are, I think, being short-sighted about the religious implications, and also who does this and who doesn't on a statistical level. And then finally, the maintenance issues, and I keep looking at the police officers who are sitting here, and it's so great to make them sit all night, but it reminds me, you know, as a prosecutor, that in New York, we have this, you have, I presume that you would perceive this public land that would be granted to you in perpetuity as hallowed ground. This type of hallowed ground falls under the ambit in many jurisdictions as a funeral, of, of a funeral site. Desecration of cemeteries is a different type of criminal offense in most jurisdictions. In Maryland, I think they call it destroying of funerary objects, which not, doesn't include, you know, what we think of as sort of unburying remains, but it's destroying, you know, headstones, destroying plaques, removing even shrubbery from those hallowed ground areas. And from my perspective, that does raise the specter of city maintenance and enforcement, because I presume that this type of hallowed ground will, will require some level of legitimate respect by members of the community, and if people are going to deface this area, the city is then put in the position of enforcing that. And so when you say, when I, like, factor in all those issues, that is what I, I'll, I'll be honest with you, and I think we should continue having this conversation, is where I'm sort of at a point where I'm at, I'm sort of hesitant of moving forward, because I, I find there to be real equity issues that are legitimate, especially, again, it's not like we're talking about a real cemetery, we're talking about you can today, if you've passed away, go to Sligo Creek in a beautiful part that you spent with your loved one and scatter your ashes. There's nothing that discriminates against your ability to do that. However, this potential area and the ability of limited amount of space for plaques, or whatever we're going to call them, stones, I think creates the prospect of there being a point where we've reached our limit, ladies and gentlemen. Your stone doesn't, or plaque doesn't qualify amongst our criteria, or we've reached capacity. And that, to me, I might not be here, many of us may not be here, but 100 years from now is problematic to me. So that's sort of what I'm battling with. I just want you to know that, because I've really thought this through, and I've been trying to continuously.
Well, if I just respond to your last point, it, it sounds to me like you're worried that it'll be, like, our citizens will love it so much, and use, and use, I mean, if it fill, if, if it really, if it has that many stones that it's full, well, then it was a huge success, and it's really important to people, and it's provided a tremendous amount of solace to a huge number of citizens. So we establish another one, because it's a great thing. In 90 years from now, it's very, you know, everybody loved it and needed it. All right.
I definitely do see your point. Thank you.
All right. You've all put in so much hard work on this, that I'm going to ask my council colleagues to, since you've been before us twice now, to think very hard about, I'm going to ask to do a hand vote on this, on whether or not to encourage all of you to continue to come back, answer these questions, and continue this conversation on looking at a location. I ask my colleagues to consider this seriously, because if you are feeling like this is not a direction for the city, I ask that you oppose moving forward, because I do think you all have put in very hard work on this. And so I'd like to do, unless anybody has any other questions right now, I think we've touched upon pretty much all the different issues on this. And so I'd like to do a hand vote, and then I'll, I'll ask you, Councilmember Kovar, your vote on this. And again, I will just say for myself, I think there are still a lot of details that have to be worked out. So this doesn't say, if you vote for it, yes, happy, like, everything's perfect. I still think there are some things we need to work out in the future on this. But all those in favor of continuing to work with members of the community who are looking to a memorial slash scatter garden, please raise your hands. One, two, three. All those opposed, please raise your hands. Councilmember Kovar, how do you vote?
My hand is not raised.
Are, are you voting, are you voting to support moving forward or oppose?
Oppose.
Oppose. Okay. Thank you so much for your consideration. Thank you. All right. We're going to take a break for a few minutes. Sorry. I know the police department is there, but I need a break. Laurel City Police Departments. All right? Oh, wait, who's? Yeah, I can turn you on. Okay.
The mic on? Okay.
Yeah, I did, but it, it died.
You're good.
All right. Basically, this is a, sort of a mirror of what we did with Montgomery County, and it's a precursor to what we want to do with Prince George's County. It's also allowing our two emergency response teams to work more smoothly together and complement each other staffing-wise, because we do have smaller teams. It really doesn't add a whole lot to our ability to police in either one of those jurisdictions. What it does is allows us to, it gives us a little bit more defined responsibilities and goals, and, and it just formalizes the decision. This is pretty much what we did before with Montgomery County.
What, one of the things that we're trying to do is when, you know, especially if there's a major, if there's a catastrophe or some other thing, we've, we've got this in place. And I know, Mayor, you asked a question about, does this make a difference with our sanctuary city status and all of that, and it does not make a difference.
No. And, and our, our own city policies, whether it be Laurel or Tacoma Park, if, if we are operating within Tacoma Park, they follow, you know, our direction, and same thing there, but we still follow our own department policies in both jurisdictions. So we're not going to do anything that would violate either, either, either agency's policies.
Okay. Yeah, I think that was just one of my concerns, given that it's likely that a number of jurisdictions are going to start deputizing their officers to carry out immigration.
Yeah, and, and I think the only way to do that would be under 287G, and that's through the federal government. And I was actually very surprised that there was only like 36 agencies in the entire U.S. that are, that are officially 287Gs. So that's a lot out of 8,000 or 7,000 agencies, so it's not very much.
One of the things, just a note, City of Laurel has, has recently rejoined COG, and so part of this is just getting everybody up to speed through that agency.
So Chief, just to go to what you said, where in the document, because that's what I was looking for, does it say, we follow, when we're in your jurisdiction, we follow your policies, when we're in your, like, where does it lay that out? Because I, that's what I was kind of looking for.
Yeah. It, it, it's, it's in the agreement, but it's buried in there, and it was, obviously it was done by our legal counsel.
It talks about, agency has to follow their own policies. I think it's in the sections here. It was put in there by the attorneys. It's all, it spells out basically, you have to, each department has to abide by its own rules and regulations within its own jurisdictions. Yeah. Councilmember...
When someone is arrested in Tacoma Park or Laurel, are they, do they go through the, whatever the incarceration facilities are that would normally, so if a Laurel...
Well, if they're arrested in Laurel, they would go through the Prince George's County system. If they're arrested in Tacoma Park, they would go through our system, which would be no different than what we would do now on, if we, even without an agreement with Prince George's County, if we see somebody stealing something and we hold them for Prince George's County Police, that would be the same thing.
Right.
Okay. This just gives us, actually codifies that we have some traffic enforcement response, not responsibility, but traffic enforcement authority if we need to make a stop, which is very helpful for our plainclothes officers when they're doing surveillances out of the city, and they need to make a stop for, for a traffic violation related to a criminal activity. It, it clarifies that part of the law. That's the one thing the law in Maryland does not allow, is, does not allow us to enforce traffic outside of our jurisdiction, unless there's a mutual aid agreement.
Great. Okay. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have mutual aid agreements with Rockville and Gaithersburg, their police departments?
Do we?
Yes.
No, no. We, we have it with Montgomery County, so we have, basically, we've already done that with Montgomery County, so we can operate anywhere within Montgomery County under the agreement.
So we can operate in, in Rockville?
Yes, because it's...
It's not a standalone police department.
Yeah. And, and we actually do have a mutual aid agreement that predates all these other mutual aid agreements with Maryland National Capitol Park Police, where they have the authority to enforce the law within the city of Tacoma Park, outside of the parks, and we have the authority to, to enforce the regulations within the park.
Do we have a mutual aid agreement with Riverdale?
No.
Are we going to pursue one with them?
No. This is actually, this, part of the, the reason behind this, one of, part of the reason behind this is both of our agencies are, have, have emergency response teams, which most of the other agencies do not have, the, the most of the jurisdictions. It's basically our SWAT team. And in order for us to protect ourselves a little bit better legally, that the mutual aid agreement gives us some authority in those other jurisdictions, even though under the COG agreement, if they request our assistance, we can go anyway. But this, this actually formalizes the agreement between the two agencies, that who's going to be in charge, you know, what our responsibilities are, who's going to make the request, that type of thing. We're not going to do it with every municipality. We hopefully will get one done with Prince George's County. That's down the road. I have talked to their Assistant Chief and to Chief Stowinski. That's coming. I was going to get to that a little bit later on in, in the presentation. And we also have the one pending with DC. We have talked to Green Belt as well, because they also have a team. They're reorganizing, they've, you know, their, their chief retired after 40 years of continued service, and, and so they're reorganizing their department, and hopefully we'll eventually get one with Green Belt when they get back up to speed. and so, they're reorganizing their department and hopefully, we'll eventually get one with Green Belt when they get back up to speed.
And so, what's the difference between Montgomery County's ERT and these Prince George's County ERT units? Are they different? Are they all the same?
No. Part of, the COG, the Council of, Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments has a SWAT Subcommittee. There are mutual aid, which we are a member of. We are a member of the SWAT Subcommittee under the Maryland, or the COG Chiefs Committee. So, we have mutual aid under emergency situations, in any case. But this just formalizes, so our teams can actually train together, work together, have similar ways of operating. Again, we're two smaller agencies, so this enhances our ability to have more bodies on a team when we both need it.
And do we train with Montgomery County's ERT?
No. Not, no.
Is there a particular reason why?
Not that I want to discuss tonight.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, I think you've answered my question, and that is, when you have a special investigations team pursuing or staking out somebody, then that gives them the right to stop a vehicle. But more than, but beyond that, does this make it easier for us to pursue a perpetrator, alleged perpetrator, into their city? Or is that sort of thing?
No, actually, Maryland law allows us to make an arrest anywhere in the state for a criminal offense. But we can't enforce, we can't, basically, we can't do traffic stops. But there, but what the law does require is that the municipal agency's governing body, which would be, in our case, the council, like in DC, would be the mayor, sign the agreement that gives the authority and then they can decide what authority they want to grant each other. And it can be limited or it can be unlimited. If it's a pursuit, legally, we can pursue somebody, you know, from here to Ocean City for a crime. You know, actually, legally, we can pursue somebody Ocean City for a traffic offense that occurred in Tacoma Park. We just have general orders that prevent those things.
The other question I have is sort of a generic one. This looks like this came around with Laurel fairly easily or quickly, but we've been working, trying to get something with Prince George's and the district for quite a while. Why is it so easy to do something with one place and not so easy with some of these bigger jurisdictions? I mean, what's the big deal?
I think the easy answer is there's been a change in administrations in both of those jurisdictions. The leadership in the police department has changed. There is still a commitment from the district, from the mayor, and I believe that the city manager has spoken with their county executive and some of the council members, and there's still that impetus. But those are major jurisdictional boundaries that, at least with DC, that's out of, that's really another state. So, that takes a little bit more writing as far as what we're gonna restrict our officers to do outside of the jurisdiction in DC. And the same thing for the DC officers. And I think there's some angst with Prince George's County as well, as far as they don't, do they really, you know, it's not a question of, do I have any issues with our officers making arrests on the Prince George's County side of New Hampshire Avenue? The question is whether Prince George's County wants their officers, you know, here. So, we have to work out the wording, but I have been in contact with the new Assistant Chief in Prince George's County and Chief Stowinski as early, as late as last week. And I'm getting a draft to them hopefully by the end of this week, early next week, and will hopefully move forward with it with Prince George's County. In DC, everything went on hold after November until after the inauguration and they basically told us nothing was gonna happen until after the inauguration and things have died down and they've got a routine down.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kreschke?
Thanks. And I know, I know that you all work on the mutual aid agreement, but there's, in the cover sheet, which I know that I think city staff prepared, there's a specific reference to allocating and agreeing and sharing of resources such as K-9 units. So, I was just trying to understand that a little bit better. I mean, assuming you're in a situation where you're in pursuit of somebody accused of committing a criminal offense and you end up in Laurel, does Laurel have K-9 capabilities similar to ours or different from ours? And could you utilize those K-9 units in Laurel since you've now stopped the person in Laurel?
Yes. I mean, we can use theirs, we do that now, under, in exigent circumstances, we can do that now. One of the issues, you know, Montgomery County has a fairly large K-9 unit, but, you know, they're not always available and they're sometimes not always, even when they are available, they may be coming from upper Montgomery County in Rush Hour down to Silver Spring. So, in fact, that happened today with a case that they had in Silver Spring where the K-9 officer was coming from Shady Grove Road, from their office. If, for instance, Laurel's a straight shot for us, so if we request their K-9, that can come down. If we have our K-9 working and they need one, we can go run up there and it's a fairly quick drive.
And our K-9 units here, are they gun dogs, drug dogs, or both?
We have patrol dogs that are also cross-trained as, some of them are, well, we're actually really down to one dog right now that's operational. We have another dog that's gonna be starting, the dog's already been to school and now we have to have the handler go to school and we have a third dog getting replaced, so. But they are cross-trained dogs for drug and narcotics detectors as well as patrol dogs.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? No? All right. Then we can move into the presentation tonight.
Mayor, excuse me, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot. Apologies, Councilmember Kovar, I forgot you were on the phone.
That's okay. That's okay. And if these were already covered and I didn't quite hear them, I apologize for that. Chief, thank you for being here. First of all, is what you're saying that even though Laurel's not literally adjacent to a budding Tacoma Park because of the emergency response teams, we both have that sort of the key basis for taking on this agreement? Is that right?
Essentially, yes, but it also enhances other investigations as well.
Okay. And I think the mayor asks us, but just to be clear, on sanctuary, is that covered within there? That we're, that we're able to maintain that?
Yeah. Nothing is gonna change as far as our general orders and the conditions which we operate.
Okay. Lastly, on DC, I understand about the inauguration, that obviously makes sense. Do we have any feeling for what the timetable could be? Because I think that continues to be, for me anyway, a big concern, given the hot areas in terms of burglaries and wards, one and three that are close to the border there.
I really can't give you a timetable because they haven't chosen a chief yet. Until they actually get a permanent chief, I'm not sure they're gonna be willing to. I don't believe he's been announced as the Chief Dushin has been announced yet, if he, if he's gonna be selected. But I am working on it with their two Assistant Chiefs. And I can only tell you that the mayor is in favor of it, so I think with their mayor's support, that it's still probably gonna be done.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Now onto the presentation.
Okay.
Well, let's see, is this an, is this an ordinance?
It's just a work session.
So, we'll be, we're gonna be bringing this back next week, right? Okay.
It's a two week.
Two, and, that's right. We have lots to do. It's 10:17. We have a lot of information. I did take the information, some additional information and put it at your place so that you have this. It'll be up online so that you'll be able to refer to it a little bit later. But I want to see if we can go through this relatively in a straightforward manner. There's a lot of information here. Frankly, much of it is interesting, but it is late. And so, for those things that are fairly quick that we can address, we can go through that. If there are some things that look like they might be a bigger discussion, we're happy to come back and have that bigger discussion. Chief, do you want to start in with, this is our annual crime?
Chairman Mayor, Council. Thank you for having us come in tonight. It's always this time of year that I actually enjoy doing the crime report. We actually got it done a little bit early this time. We have gone to more automated systems, so we're allowed, we were able to do that. And I'm not gonna go through every slide in detail. Well, if you insist.
No, 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 no.
But the crime data for 2016, Part 1 crimes, again, is the more serious crime. Part 2 crimes are the less serious. We have a snapshot of drug offenses, traffic data for 2016. I have a large representation from the Criminal Investigations Division here tonight, as well as Patrol and Administrative Services are represented. Of course, the source is our new eJustice system that, I think this is the second year, so we've gotten some really good statistics. We've automated most of that. Well, I won't say we, I'd say Andrea has automated most of it, which really gives us our numbers very quickly, which is much nicer because we can do on-the-fly crime analysis. There is a reduction in crime and that's the, probably the most important thing that you want to hear about the crime report tonight, is that serious crime was down from last year 19% and 25% over two years. Thefts from auto, and I will put a caveat there that there's been an increase in the last month or so, but for 2016, the numbers went down drastically, 37% since 2014. I think part of that is the education campaign that we have done to educate people to not, not keep their valuables in plain sight, to lock your car. The other part of that is that we've also begun investigating those cases, which most jurisdictions do not have the ability or the time to do, or the, or they don't want to do it because there's other more important things that they want to do. What they don't realize is those people that break into cars are the same ones that are breaking into houses, that are the same ones that are robbing people, and they usually go for crimes of opportunity. So, we look at all of those cases as more than just a quality of life. If we can get them off the street for larceny from auto and send a message, then hopefully, the other crimes go down as well. The reduction in burglaries, you know, that went down 19%, mostly in the last two months of the year. I'll let them, the detectives talk about that in a few minutes and where we are with that. And the one increase that you'll see is the increase in aggravated assaults. Aggravated assaults are those assaults with a weapon or threatened, threatening with a weapon or where there's a serious injury. And frankly, those, a lot of times, are domestic assaults. Those are between people that know each other, usually alcohol involved. They're very hard to mitigate that type of crime. I will tell you, as the Chair of the COG Committee, one of the things that we have, I was asked by the COG Board to present, which we will present in October, the crime report for last year, for the COG region, was the increase over the last two years in serious assaults and in some jurisdictions homicides. And they have asked, they have tasked the planning and the crime analysis subcommittees under the Chiefs Committee to come up with some reasons why and to see if it's a regional trend, which we know it's a regional trend. We just don't know exactly the causation. And we've seen that across the country as well, in some major cities. And again, I'm not gonna go through all the slides. You can look at the numbers. Burglary in particular went down, it's the second lowest since 2008. Robberies have gone down considerably. Stolen cars are staying very low. Larcenies came down and that was a significant decrease. I'm gonna go very quickly through this. And then, of course, there's the Part 2 crimes, which are the all-other crimes. You're gonna see a lot of sudden deaths in Tacoma Park, but that's because we take reports at the hospital for deaths that, you know, people that are transported in and we are required to take care of that. And then, you can go through the rest of these. You can see that the numbers go down very quickly. Drug-related crimes, we still focus on distribution. I did expect the number, you'll see the number artificially go up a little bit from last year on the marijuana crimes. And the reason for that is it's a civil offense and it's, and it's just a citation. So, people don't go to jail over this or get arrested, they just get a civil citation. Out of all the cases, 77 of those cases are citation cases where they just got a ticket. Juveniles, I do not believe, can get a citation in the state, so if they're charged on paper. And that's why you'll see some difference in the numbers. And then, there were five distributions or possession with, to distribute arrests during the year. And then, you'll see the other drugs. We have seen a little uptick in cocaine and opiates, not as much as we have seen in the other jurisdictions that surround us, Montgomery County and Frederick and Baltimore, Prince George's, Charles in particular, all have high numbers of opiate overdoses. We have, you know, fortunately, have not seen that in the city itself. We have seen it outside, we've had a few, but not, not to the degree that the other jurisdictions have seen. And of course, PCP's always been a popular drug in this area. And if you look at the geographic locations mapped out of where the drug crimes occur, of course, you know, the New Hampshire Avenue corridor and then sporadically throughout the rest of the city.
And that tends to come from traffic stops, right?
Yeah, and that usually comes from traffic stops. And remember, most of these marijuana arrests are not us going out looking for people. It's traffic stops, complaints of disorderly smoking of marijuana in the hallways of apartment buildings. We walk up on a car, that's a suspicious car, and there's a strong odor of marijuana. That's how these arrests occur. But, you know, obviously, New Hampshire Avenue is a corridor from DC out to the other communities and, you know, we do make a lot of traffic stops on that, on that street. I'm not gonna go through the speed camera. I will just give you an idea that the...
Actually, yeah, go back just one second. I think, you know, generally, there, the numbers are down a little bit. And so, that'll be something that will be identified during the budget process.
And part of that is Carroll Avenue Bridge is closed, so there has been very little traffic going down Carroll Avenue and that violation, there's almost $1,000, $1,000 tickets less last year at Carroll Avenue than there was the year before and considerably less. Now, the good news is that means, you know, hopefully, that less people are speeding too, which is the whole idea behind the speed cameras, is to reduce speeding. This is a statistic that we're actually rather proud of. If you look at Criminal Investigation Section's closure rate, it's 45.4% for serious crimes for 2016. Nationwide, it's considerably less. In fact, burglary clearance is nationwide are around 12% to 13% and ours is considerably higher. Now...
Do you want to turn this over to...
Yep. I'll let you guys talk about the burglaries. This is one, one case that they're gonna talk about, that we can tie the suspect to 42 burglaries in the city in the last 18 months alone, so.
Good evening. Thanks, Chief. I'm Sergeant Rich Poole. I'm the supervisor of our Criminal Investigation Section and my unit was responsible for investigating all those burglaries that we've discussed over 2015 and 2016. In these, increase of these burglaries in neighborhoods bordering Washington DC, through crime analysis, we were able to determine that it was likely that the suspect responsible for these incidents was the same person, that it wasn't a group of people, but more so, it was one particular person. It was a time of night, it was a method of operation that was very consistent. And we put together numerous details in order to try to apprehend and identify the suspect. After tirelessly investigating these crimes, investigators were able to develop a career criminal serial burglar as our suspect. Through investigative means, we've been able to put together and determine that he was in close proximity to a majority of our burglaries. And on the screen, you'll see that, I think there's 42 burglaries that he was in, in the city of Tacoma Park. He doesn't live in the city of Tacoma Park. And he was in the city in close proximity to these residences around the time that the burglaries occurred. Since then, we've located him and we've interviewed him. And after speaking with investigators, our burglaries have stopped. We reached out to the Montgomery County State's Attorney's Office and we requested a special prosecutor to work with us in order to build the best case for indictment on this gentleman. We have since been able to have enough probable cause in order to charge him with at least one of the burglaries that we know that he's related to and other cases may come about later. There's still a lot of work to be done. There's still a lot of work to be done. We haven't quit, we haven't stopped. Detective Corporal Butler has been working, and all the members of the Criminal Investigations Division have been working tirelessly in order to identify this guy, so my hat's off to them.
Some of the other things that we've done, it's no longer attack raids, it's no longer our crime analysis program, it is Accurate Crime Analysis, LexisNexis bought them out, so the title's a little bit nicer. They also have, and I will send this out to everybody, but we just went live with the online public side of the Accurate software two days ago, and we're still messing with it to see what it can and can't do, but it'll be at communitycrime maps dot com. It actually is a very robust program, you can do your own heat maps, your own analysis, you can do alerts, there's a lot of things you can do. Unfortunately, Tacoma Park doesn't come up on the pull-down, you have to go to the map, and then you can draw an area, or you can look at a particular address, but it gives you a lot of opportunity to play with the crime analysis data yourself, and opens it up. And I was actually very impressed with the public side, which is a little, it does a lot more than crimereports.com, which is not actually verified crimes, it's calls for service. GPS data, what we've done is partnered, we have, this was a memorandum of understanding, so it wasn't something that would come across the Council with the Department of Corrections in DC. In fact, I think Captain Freshcorn's going to training tomorrow, which will give us access to their GPS offender data, the ankle bracelets. And what we are doing is, we are sending them our information on where the crimes occur, and they cross-match it to the GPS data on the offenders, and if we have a match, then we have a suspect. And we've been doing that with Maryland, but we just were able to get the go-ahead to do this with DC. And, of course, we do lots of cross-matching with the other jurisdictions, and we're constantly talking to the detectives in the other sections. And this just gives you an idea of what the Accurate Crime Data looks like. Now, one of the things that does not work, and we're trying to get it fixed with LexisNexis, is the Ward Map. The Ward Map isn't, you can put layers in there, like our beats, our police reporting areas, but the Ward Map's not working, so we're still working on that. And then, you'll see, these come out every two weeks, the weekly Crime Reports, this is the new format you'll see, and you can, again, you can go on online and click on these, and you'll get a brief synopsis of the type of crime. This is just something that, one of the things that we do, the GPS use, this is, I know it looks like the Matrix, as a couple people have said, when Andrea shows how he does this. This is our relational database mining tool, it's the Analyst Notebook from IBM, and what we do is, we'll take the GPS data, you know, whether it's cell phones, ankle bracelets, or whatever, and then we take our report data, and we put the two together, and that's when we get a hit for a burglary. And you can see the two burglary hits on this, that where it automatically looks for these relational databases, relationships, and alerts us. We can add pawn data into that as well, and phone data, you know, and we've gotten a lot of hits back to close cases. And this just gives you a visual, a real quick visual of what it looks like on the map.
The mayor always loves seeing El Map, and it pops up.
Yeah, I know.
My house is the epicenter.
Well, and this is a GPS, this is a GPS signal on one of the individuals that we were looking at, where he walked around the house. So, it can be very accurate. I'm going to have Captain Freshcorn talk about the Internal Affairs Complaint Investigations for the year, as well as the use of force.
So, as far as Internal Affairs, these are the different things that, we have IA Pro, which we purchased a couple of years ago, it's a Internal Affairs Case Management System, and it keeps track of all of these things, use of force, departmental collisions, pursuits, complaints, firearms discharges. Before, it was hard to look at all that stuff, and we have a Pew system, something that the state said that every department in Maryland has to go to, we had it before they mandated that. The Pew system, basically, it looks at all these different things, and we can set parameters on it, you know, in our general orders, we have, if a certain amount of these occur in a certain period of time, and it sets off an alert. It may not necessarily mean that the officer did something wrong, but it lets us know, hey, this officer's had, you know, four accidents in six months, or this officer's had four use of force, or four complaints, or however it's set. So, it gives us something to send out to the supervisor to look at them, and talk with them, and see if any of the incidents need extra training, or to go over some of them. Last year, in 2016, we had 18 formal complaints. Nine of them were subjected to Internal Affairs Investigations. How that works is, the less serious complaints, they go to the supervisors for an administrative review with the officer to go over policy, and it's sort of like a counseling session where they go over what happened, what can be done better. The nine that were subjected to Internal Affairs ones are more complicated ones, are more serious offenses. Eleven of those were submitted by citizens, and five were generated internally by the chief, or by other employees. And two of them were submitted by outside agencies. There were no complaints that were submitted anonymously. Out of the Internal Affairs Investigations, or out of the complaints, it involved 10 officers, so not every officer in the department got a complaint. There could be one officer that got two or three complaints, or more than one complaint. There were two civilian employees that were subject of complaints, and one civilian was involved in more than one complaint. Seven of our 18 complaints were completed with sustained findings, which means, whatever the complaint was, part of it, when we look at it, we look at violations of our general orders, or violations of our policies, and out of those 18, seven of them were determined to be sustained. Three of them are still pending investigations for various reasons, those three are all internal complaints, not from citizens. And then, nine complaints were referred to a supervisor for counseling investigation in lieu of an Internal Affairs investigation. Some of the disciplinary measures that we took last year on the sustained violations were suspensions, there were some resignations, written reprimand, assignment to community service, and assignment to other stuff to address it, like training. Getting into our use of force, our use of force is pretty low every year, it's, as far as the TASER usage, we've gone down a lot over the years. We have a very comprehensive use of force reporting requirements, that some other agencies don't have. So, one of them, well, of course deadly force, if you use deadly force, but even on, like to kill a rabid raccoon, or a deer, or something like that, it still gets reported because it's a use of force. Any use of a secondary weapon or physical strike, if there's a material difference, like we lock someone up and they say, hey, that officer pushed me on the ground, or that officer punched me, and it didn't happen, the officer said that didn't happen, there's a material difference, so we do a use of force report on it anyway, and we investigate it. Any intentional or unintentional discharge of a firearm or TASER, so if you have your TASER pointed at someone, it goes off accidentally, still have to do a use of force, regardless of whether you meant to do it or not. K-9, and then, if an officer's ambushed or assaulted. And if there's any force that results in an injury, even if it's, there's no weapons involved, like you handcuff someone, and they're struggling with you, and they fall to the ground and get injured, the use of force gets done. So, in 13 incidents in 2016 is what we had for use of force, 13 times. We had, if you look later on in this presentation, it's going to show our calls for service, traffic stops, and self-initiated calls. If you combine all those, it comes out to over 17,000. So, we use force in less than 0.05% of the total police contacts. Two of the use of force incidents involved animals, one was a deer, one was a raccoon. One involved a claim of force when there was no force, it was someone who said that someone struck them, but there were several witnesses that said that they were never struck, and the body camera stuff that we have now. One incident involved the use of the TASER's light, so we even have to report if the TASER is turned on and someone is targeted with a laser light, and that's used to, whenever we're going to, you know, tell someone, if we don't want to taze them, but it gives them an idea that we could possibly use the TASER, and it's a de-escalation tool, so that was one that was reported. And then, five of them were more than one officer involved. One thing that went up this year is mental health issues, we had four of our use of force involve mental health issues. And that could be anywhere from someone calling and saying, you know, I'm having issues with a family member, and they're having a mental health crisis, and we get out there and they're violent, and we have to take them to the hospital, and then some sort of force has to be used because we can't get them to comply with us. So, that's one thing that I noticed this year, or in 2016, that went up. If you look at our use of force, we had three TASER, or five TASER usages, three OC or pepper spray usages, one firearm, which was for a deer, an injured deer, physical strikes, hand controls, and one claim of force that didn't happen. So, we're mostly using hand controls or physical strikes, so just leading someone or using arm bars, that type of thing, as opposed to secondary weapons, because we do try to de-escalate situations, and it shows in that. The TASER uses is a variety of different ones, and one of the TASER uses was on an Talking a little bit about our SAT team, which is the Special Investigation Section, they have three detectives and a Sergeant Holtzle. They help out the investigators when we have, for case enhancement, if we're looking for a suspect, like with the burglaries, when we had the burglaries, if we work any details, they'll help us out with that. If we have a specific person we're targeting, they'll help us go look for that person. So, there's different things they do with that. They're responsible for most of the complaints that come in. If the community comes up with a problem area or house involving drugs, they do the drug investigations and work with the community on that stuff, they've been pretty good with that. Assisting other agencies, when other agencies come in the city to do anything, or we need their assistance with something, and as you know, most of these people who are doing stuff in the city are also doing stuff in Montgomery County or DC. In fact, we tend to close out a lot more cases for other agencies than they do for us. And then, self-initiated investigations. So, when you saw that, the traffic stops and drug stuff on New Hampshire Avenue, a lot of that is our SAT guys. Some of the notable arrests that they had last year, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm just going to go through this, you can look at these in your, the copy that you have, but reference to drugs, handguns, stuff like that, that SAT got involved in last year. This is, did you want to talk about this? The calls and...
All right. You'll see that the only reduction we've seen this year is traffic stops went down by, we jokingly say that's because Michelle Holmes is in the office more often than she's on the street now, but it probably has a lot more to do with increased traffic, and also, we've been staffing, we've had some staffing shortages in Patrol while people are in the academy and injured, and that type of thing. So, that's not unexpected, and that can go back up or down every year, but otherwise, we've stayed about the same. Dispatch calls for service, just, there's been an increase of about 100 calls over last year. Now, we are going to a new computer dispatch system, which is going to give us more information. We'll actually be able to tell you how many phone calls we get, and Captain Bowers can talk about it when we talk about the, I think this is yours. When we talk about, one of the things that's going to be a major change for the Police So, I think we already talked about the mutual aid agreements, I don't want to go back over that. Staffing, we're, on paper right now, we are actually at staffing levels for sworn officers. Unfortunately, three of them are in the academy, and two are in field training, so they're graduated the academy, and they're out on the street. And then, we have one more that will be entering the academy in July, one of our own. And he's one of those guys that, I got to compliment him here a little bit, you know, since he's not here, it won't go to his head, I'll just tell you, he's a very hard worker, and we're proud to have him. We have a number of people that are eligible to be retired in the next year, that, some that can go now, and some that will most likely go in the next year. And we also anticipate at least maybe a resignation. And there's always the things that pop up, we had one officer leave, that was a very good officer, very young, hard worker, but family issues, and he moved back to Kentucky, and he's a police officer there now, because his family's there. And you can't argue with that kind of, with that kind of move when it was family-related. So, we do have a dispatcher opening, and we, Kelly, formerly Rosenkrantz, is no longer with us, she is now with another jurisdiction as a crime analyst, she has her master's degree in crime analysis, and we congratulate her on that. The one thing that we didn't talk about, and I wanted to bring up, is the new 911 procedures, and I'm going to let Captain Bowers talk about that. Admin Services also takes care of several other units in the Police Department, to include dispatch.
Good evening. I'll be quick, because I know it's getting late. One of the things that, as an organization and a city, we've pushed for many, many years is the emergency number to call and reach our communication center, which is a 301-270-1100 number. We want to begin moving away from that, and getting the public to move away from that, for a number of reasons. Our capacity to answer the telephones is limited by the number of people we have in the room, and we can only have so many incoming calls, and people get frustrated, they hang up, and they call back. So, when we have someone who calls 911, that 911 call goes up to Montgomery County, and then it's queued back down to us. If we don't answer the phone in four rings, their call taker will pick up the phone, and then we're not losing that telephone call. What happens is, we try to answer everything within two rings, which is like 15 seconds of a telephone call. So, we don't want citizens to call in, and then we be at our capacity to answer telephones. If what happens is, one of our dispatchers is on the phone, and they're taking a call, and they're on the line for three minutes with the citizen who was robbed, but somebody who saw the robberies trying to call in, we're not able to get both of those calls at the same time. But this system will allow the county to pick off that call that we weren't able to pick up, get the information entered into the computer system, and allow our dispatcher to then put that information out to the officers responding to the call. So, what it'll let us do is, just gives us more capacity to answer telephones, which we have a limit on now, we either have one, two, or three staff working at a time, so that limits how many phones we can pick up. This adds capacity to our ability. We understand that it's a big change from what we have advertised in the past, and this isn't something that we expect to happen overnight. The 270-1100 line will always be available for emergencies if somebody should call, but we'd really like to start phasing people into the 911 line. We also know that there's going to be some frustration if they get PG County Dispatch Center, the PG County people will push the call over to us, it'll get queued into the 911 system, and the call should be handled the same exact way. At some point in the future...
Excuse me, Captain Bowers, I think we were talking about this before, the, if a call goes to Prince George's County, it doesn't have to then go straight, it doesn't have to go to Montgomery County?
No, it comes straight to us.
It can come straight to us, so that does save some time. We've had some technological changes with the phone systems to allow for some faster relays on those.
Yeah, so those calls will come straight into us. So, it will take some time, but we are hoping to get everybody moved to it in the future. I recognize it's a big change, but maybe steps to get there.
Yep. And just, part of what we'll follow up on is kind of the mechanism for starting to share that information, and, did you have a question about that?
Does that cover cell phones?
Yeah. It does do cell phones.
Yeah, and, you know, we've always said, hey, if you're on a cellphone, put it in speed dial. The problem is this, we've had several incidents since our new phone system is in. The new phone system is on the Montgomery County 911 system, so we are part of their system, just as if we were sitting in Rockville. The problem comes in when people call 270-1100, it is a non-emergency line, even though we've been using it as one for years. And if our dispatchers are on 911, that phone will ring and ring and ring, and will not go anywhere, and people usually just get frustrated and hang up, and we don't want that to occur. Because the 911 line, it takes priority, and we will not be able to answer that non-emergency number while we're handling an emergency. The other advantage is, you know, even for a county of a million people, Montgomery County only has about eight call takers working that take all the calls for the entire county at one time. So, it's not unusual for them to pick up after each other, you know, if one doesn't answer, then the next one does. But this gives us the advantage of not losing those calls, and getting more information to the officers that we could potentially lose. You know, we had 17 simultaneous calls on the one incident on Glenn Side, where the shots were fired. 17 callers at one time, I don't care whether it's Montgomery County, or us, or anybody else, I mean, you can't answer 17 calls, and we lost some of the 270-1100 calls, and we had some people very frustrated with that. And so, I know it's going to be a big change, and we have to get the message out, both on the web. You know, I know some of Kathy's footers on some of her things actually say, when you need to... when you need to call the police, call this number. And, and we want to push 911 as the emergency number. Hopefully in five years with the new, the new version of 911, when, when and if this occurs, you know, like I've said before, Google knows where you are, almost to within 10 feet. But 911 doesn't, because, you know, we're not in it for, for profit and we don't have, you know, the phone companies don't track that accurately where the phone is. It's the, it's the apps and the smartphones that actually do it and you give them permission. So, the next generation 911 should be able to give us that and it'll relieve some of those other issues that we've had over the years on which 911 center you're gonna get. And, and...
One of the things that, oh, you want to do the crash data real quick?
Yeah, I'll do that real quick, really. May, if you want to, go ahead.
No, why don't we do this, it's very, it's a short amount.
This, this year is the first year we've actually got our crash data back since Maryland State went automated and, and so it, it's sort of a...
Does it make the Safe Roadways Committee really happy?
Yes, this is, yes. It was not an easy, it was not easy just download it into a program. I mean, they, Andrea and Michelle had to really go into every category and try to create a spreadsheet so that they could put it into a, an analysis program. But we had 226 crashes for the year recorded. Of course, the heat map, and this is just the area map with the dots and if, obviously it's the main arteries and, and the commercial areas. And if you'll note, like, you'll see those accidents down at the southern end of New Hampshire Avenue, which is Prince George's County, those are actually probably parking lot accidents or accidents in the gas station where they're not serious or somebody complains of neck and back pain even though there's not a lot of damage, it was low speed. So, those are gonna show up there as well. These are only reported accidents, these are not the accidents that we do not write a report on. So there's your heat map. It's pretty obvious, the congested areas. 31% involve injury, that can be a complaint of injury. That doesn't necessarily mean any visible injury or the person was transported. Eventually, we hope we'll get, be able to get, because the state captures that data, it's just getting the data back in a usable form is very hard. Came up at the COG meeting, the ASSEC meeting the other day, this is the first year that we've had over 40,000 fatal collisions in the United States in 10 years. And you would think with safer cars, speed cameras, all these things that, and, and trauma care, my God, it's, it's light years ahead 10 years, from 10 years ago. You would think that the number of people being killed goes down, but it's actually gone up and that's concerning. Maryland had an increase in, in fatal collisions. One of the reasons is distracted driving, one of the other reasons that they believe, and this, this is from the State Highway Safety Administration, they talked about how people are relying so much on their smart electronics in their car, you know, the, the collision detection systems and the sensors to say, hey, you know, slow down, you're gonna hit somebody. And they stop paying attention to what they should be doing, driving, and they rely more on the technology. So that's, that's one of the things they're looking at, but we want to reduce crashes. Obviously, we had a very serious collision involving a child this, last week. And, you know, parking lot accident, kid chasing a ball type thing and there's just, you know, that's one of those things that happens, low speed, but we do want to prevent some of these accidents. And, and about a quarter of the accidents are property damage hit and runs, which we are, even if there's minor damage, we are required to take a report. And I'm not gonna go through all of that, so. The next thing I want to talk about is, you know, it really doesn't, crime statistics going down isn't necessarily the measure of, of a police department's effectiveness. It's, it's, it's great if you're a crime victim and it's great if you want a livable community and you feel safe, but we also want a police department that's trusted, that's open, and that's why I come back to procedural justice. It's not necessarily doing good police work, it's also how we do our job. The Police Foundation, you know, right now the cops office is in turmoil, the funding in the federal government is, is sort of up in the air, but the Police Foundation still exists and fortunately, two of the, the director is, have known him and worked with him for the last 30 years and the senior policy person over there just got the job as another, as a retired deputy chief from Alexandria that I've known since we were both sergeants. So, we, we have a very good rapport with them and there's a lot of training opportunities for procedural justice and, and, and other training. And he did point out to me today, and I wanted to point this out, is, you know, we're very spoiled in the Washington metropolitan area. We have very well-trained police officers, we have good policies in most of the departments and we have a lot of accountability. But he's helping a jurisdiction out west right now that has not one written policy. So when the officer comes to work, day work, his sergeant has a no pursuit policy, but his sergeant on evenings has a pursuit policy. I mean, so, you know, that, when we look at nationwide at the lowest common denominators, that's where a lot of the bad press comes from. And we, and we have to improve that across the board and there's always room for improvement.
One of, one of the things I just want to mention is that I was, I was pleased that we were acknowledged as, of having our general orders and other items online as required by the state of Maryland, but we did get our information up quickly. And we're trying to do that, it's very nice that we'll be having this crime data more available as well.
And then, you know, I talked about accountability and transparency and outreach. You know, several depart, one department in particular has, has created a community, it's, it's not a, an outreach division or a, it's a community engagement division where they've actually robbed Peter to pay Paul and put a captain in charge. We don't necessarily have those deep pockets, but I think that it's, it's a, it's a path we want to go down in some form. And, you know, of course, we have the body cameras, but I'm gonna let Captain Collington talk about some of the things that we've accomplished over the last year and some of the things that we want to do and go from there.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Mayor, Council, Chief, and coworkers, colleagues. I've been asked to cover some of the accomplishments that we've achieved over the last year. In light of everything that's going on across the country, you know, the distrust, disconnect between law enforcement and the community. Tacoma Park, we wanted to get out in front of our community, let them know that we do care about them. We've had, we've started going into the schools, speaking with all the principals, speaking with students in, in classrooms, just trying to bridge that gap. And we've made a lot of accomplishments there. You know, you heard the stats, yes, we serve and protect, but we also build relationships. That's what's paramount in the community and that's what's been missing a long time in the communities. And I believe, you know, working with some of the, in fact, I want to highlight one of Councilman Smith's summer programs, Lunch and Learn. You know, every year, you know, we go into the school, we meet with the students there, we go in and we do K-9 demonstrations, we bring cars and let them play with the lights and things like that. What we're trying to do is basically, we're trying to put a thumbprint on our kids here because our kids are our future tomorrow. Over the course of the year, this year I started a homework study group and that consists of kids.
A lot of kids.
We started with six kids, we're up to 15 kids now. And these kids look forward to coming to the police station every week. For one hour a day, they're at the police station. We feed them pizza, we go over homework with them, we talk, we have rap sessions, we talk about peer pressure, bullying, you know, taking care of one another. And these kids are our future. Now, you know, I like to just highlight one of my kids, all of them are good, but one particular kid, when you look into a kid's eyes and, and you can get a good feel on a kid that he really respects the police. And I look at this kid as looking at myself when I was his age. I grew up in Washington DC and there was a officer friendly program and that police officer had a profound impact in my life, which made me want to respect police, want to be a police officer. I tell people, you know, there are many jobs out there, but a call-in is something that's unique to you and you only. You know why you became a police officer and I know why I became a police officer and that is to, you know, embrace our youth. Because when I look around, we did, as the chief talked about, one of our new cadets, I've been taking this kid around with me into schools, into the churches, everywhere I go, to some meetings, because I believe that by me emerging him into the community where he's gonna work before we give him a badge and gun, can kind of change the mindset of him. I think the community should have some input on who leads them and who polices them. You know, because these kids that, you know, that I'm dealing with, especially Cadet Attaciel, I take him down and I work with the ACE Academy, those kids love him. When we go in, he's connected now to the Ethiopian community and that speaks volumes to our police department. I think the police department, as you know, you're well aware, police department should be diverse in the community that it serves. If there's no, you know, diversion there, then a diversity, I'm sorry, any diversity there, how can they trust the police? You know, and I think I've had a conversation with someone before in reference to, you know, just having that diversity out in the police department, out in the community, because when they come to the city or come to the police department to express a concern, they want to have that connection. And I'm sorry, Councilman Ressi, you got the ticket, but we're trying to get our officers out into the community to, to know our elected officials. That's a big thing. You know, get out your car, get on your, get on, on your foot, on your feet and walk around. But, you know, a couple of other things that I want to talk about, I don't want to be here too long, but we are making great strides and City Manager asked me to talk about a, another initiative that I'm trying to be a part of. And, excuse me, Madam Mayor, congratulations on award the other night. And I want to thank you for your hard work that you do in the community. Excuse me? Oh, I'm sorry. But also, I want to talk about this new initiative that we want to bring about. And I'm working now to bring all the principals in the city together. I want to have a luncheon with all the principals to get them acquainted with one another because in one household, you can have four kids that go to four separate schools in the community. I've also been in contact with the immigration attorney. The police department, we are not taking a political stand, you know, in this, this project that we're doing, but what we want to do is just bring all the principals together for a luncheon, get them acquainted with one another and also have a attorney there that knows about immigration, because a question came up from one of my kids and the question was, they're kind of fearful if they go home and find out that immigration showed up at one of their sibling's school, how would they deal with it? So, that sparked me to start doing some work and start grinding to try to put something together, bring all my school staff together, my facilitators together and have this attorney come in and, she's more than welcome, she travels the region and this is what she do in schools throughout the region. So, she's excited to be here. As soon as the Deputy City Manager and the, and the City Manager and the Chief, we all get together, clean up the language and then we'll send out the flyer and get that started. And that's all I have.
One of the things I just want to mention, and we haven't really talked about some of the vehicle issues that, that are just facing us, but I did want to mention that, you know, we certainly have been participating and very aware of the immigration changes at the federal level and the impact that that has in our community. We participated in the teach-in on Sanctuary. There's been a number of blogs and letters and items in the newsletter about it. But we're also trying to be very responsive when we hear rumors to see if they're valid areas of concern and get that out to you so that as your constituents ask you questions, we, we know what's going on. I think, you know, as I mentioned earlier, the long passport lines, you know, there's a lot of anxiety in the community and we're trying to keep on top of that and trying to make sure that the information that you get is correct. It's so easy to, to have exaggerations or misinformation and I, to the extent that we can as city staff, we want to ensure that the information that you get from us is correct and it's something that's reliable that you can pass on to your constituents.
And I just wanted to add, the Explorer Program has taken off. We have about 15 involved, it's still in the infant stages, so. I also, at, at the COG meeting today, one of the things that we went over is, one of the, one of the programs that's available is a program called Operation Blue Shield, which, you know, I, I didn't know what it was, I, I think I'd seen their logo around, but the, the founder came in and talked to us, she's from Dallas, Texas. And what, what it is, it actually is a joint community police engagement tool. They have a lot of templates that they've been using and it's more to solve, not necessarily the police to solve everybody's problems, but it's also to show the community how important the police are. Their logo, if you ever see it, is a ribbon with gold in the middle or, or yellow in the middle with two blue stripes and that's the police protecting the community and the community being there for the police. And I thought it was a, there, there was a lot of good things. Fairfax County is, is running with it and they're gonna release it, I think, in, at their national night out and we're exploring, jumping in in the COG region as well, from my committee, the Chief's Committee, as, as a, a good template to use for community engagement. And it...
I just, I do want to just mention, although we, we focused on 2016, we've had very interesting break-ins of cars in this community. What's the number about?
Well, there's about 60 that occurred and, and mostly in other neighborhoods other than Councilman Cressy's. Unfortunately, our stepped-up enforcement and patrol probably in, in the Maple Avenue corridor where most of it was occurring. I think we had, what, 40 there? Something around 40? We had 40 or 50 in the, in the Maple Avenue area alone, they're targeting cabs. We have a large number of cab drivers that live in that area. The other thing is, DC is also getting hit with them and we've...
Yeah, it's all over the region.
And we've actually identified three individuals that are committing these crimes and, and one of the bulletins that came out like last week with, from, from Arlington?
Arlington.
Yeah. Arlington, Virginia, with a suspect, a surveillance photo, was one of our suspects. So, it's not like they're sticking to Tacoma Park. I mean, they're very prolific, they're part of Rittenhouse Crew, you know, they're, they're rearing their ugly head again and, and we're gonna, you know, hopefully, when we find these guys, because they're not staying at their usual residences and that type of thing. And there's, they're responsible for stolen cars and Larceny Samato mostly.
One of the things I just want to mention is that in, in dealing with the outbreak of the, outbreak of break-ins on the, of the cabs along Maple Avenue, that our officers, you know, had to have a, a good way of talking with the cab owners. And so it took a little bit of extra, a little bit of extra work about how to communicate and identify that there's a, a rash of crimes and what to do and, and advice and I appreciated that there was some thoughtfulness given to that, so. We, we've tried to go through things, it's after 11. We have lots more statistics and, that we didn't put here, but we wanted to give the highlights of 2016.
Okay. And Councilmember Cressy has been waiting.
Thanks. Thank you very much for your report from everybody. I kind of liked this year how a lot of people were involved. It's good to see other faces in the department. One thing that I was a little concerned about is the increase in aggravated assaults and I think you described, at least in Maryland, I guess, in DC aggravated assaults is specifically based on if it's a significant bodily injury. It seems like in Maryland it might include a weapon as well.
No, actually, actually that's UCR.
Oh, it is?
It is. If, if there's a weapon or weapon threatened, it's supposed to go down as an aggravated ADW in DC.
Right.
But the, the report classification may not be what you charge the person with.
Right.
But it should be reported as an aggravated assault. You may not see it in your office as an ADW, you, you'll see it as, as, as an assault, but you, but technically it should be reported that way.
Has there been any consistency in the types of weapons used in ADWs or aggravated assaults across the region or the area, I guess?
You know, it depends on the jurisdiction. You know, for a large metropolitan area, very few are gun violence compared to some other jurisdictions. You know, a lot of times it's more the seriousness of the injuries. Knives are, you know, especially in certain communities, knives are more often used than anything else, baseball bats, but, you know, most of ours have not been firearms. anything else, baseball bats, but, you know, most of ours have not been firearms.
And you said that there are known victims in assailants, so are these domestic disputes?
Not necessarily. I mean, it could be bar fights. It could be, you know, two guys that get mad at each other after drinking together somewhere out on the street. It could be domestic disputes as well.
Okay. Just two other points. You talked about how you're tying into the DC network, which I use all, on a daily basis of tracking potential suspects through GPS data. Now, in DC, there's a very important case up before the DC Court of Appeals about whether law enforcement can use for purposes of identification, an individual who's been on probation release and is on a GPS monitor versus being on pre-trial release. I just only raised that for you because I don't know what the law is in Maryland, but just to be potentially careful, to do whatever you can to corroborate other forms of identification.
Yeah. Well, and the GPS itself is not going to be probable cause. It just leads us to a suspect, and then we have to develop the case. One of the things I learned from the Director of Corrections in Montgomery County, Rob Green, was that even if you're on pre-release or you're on bond stat, if you're, well, pre-release, I won't say if you're on bond status, you're not allowed to have a cell phone. It's, it's an extension of jail. And if you do have a cell phone, you have to give the number to the corrections officers, and they, and you give up some of those privacy rights as being on probation or parole. So, you know, I see your point, you know, as far as pre-release and stuff. We still have trouble getting the juvenile records from DC. That's, and I think you do too.
Yeah, those are highly protected DYS records. I guess the other thing, and I'll end on this point, is when you think about the increase in crime in our community, you've talked about aggravated assaults, but the things that I, as a council member, hear about the most, as you probably do too, are break-ins in cars and burglaries. I just wanted to, I had a conversation with a community member about this, and I frankly wasn't aware myself. To me, immediately, what comes to mind in burglaries that are prosecuted is crime scene is essential. Do we, what is the extent of our crime scene unit within our department?
Well, we do, we do our own processing, but we actually do, we, we'll do everything from fingerprinting to DNA.
So is every officer trained to do that, every patrol?
All the patrol officers can do the fingerprinting and DNA. I mean, the kits are easy. Now, some of our cases are closed through, through fingerprint and/or DNA. Some of the Rittenhouse Crew cases that we had, we, were burglaries where we had DNA. So we do, you know, we do do that on burglaries when we have the ability to take that. I mean, if there's evidence, especially if there's, you know, blood or anything like that, so.
So presumably, if you get a call for a break into a vehicle, is one of the first things you're doing, just dusting for prints?
Well, we, we try to do that. I mean, obviously, weather can, can affect that, but we, the officers are supposed to do that. In fact, the one person was identified in the, in the cab break-ins was a fingerprint. So, you know, that, that is essential to, to the case.
So the final thing that I just want to end on is, and I talked about this earlier, about that parking ticket thing, is that for me, I think a lot of this and the complaints that I receive from the community, it's not really about individual officers' conduct. It's about their belief that somebody should be responsive to them. Now, what's interesting from my perspective is, and I know there's federal statutes that govern this, I'm sure there are in Maryland, once an arrest has been made, a victim of a crime has certain rights of being notified of the status of the litigation or the prosecution. Now, what's interesting in our situation, a lot of times, is there is, you know, some, some crime occurs, the resident makes a request or calls the police, a report is generated, but you remain in an investigation state, phase to ascertain potential suspects and continue that investigation. I think that there is a disconnect amongst community members, too, sort of misinformation, understanding that if you have a pending criminal investigation, you've taken the report. One, there's nothing legally that triggers your obligation to notify them repeatedly about where you are because it's a privileged investigation. But two, I think there should be a protocol put in place of just whoever that responding officer is, the reporting officer, the arresting officer, I guess in this case, there's not an arrest in my hypothetical, that I think, just to put the individual at ease, hey, you know, we haven't made an arrest yet, we can't get into details, but we've taken the report and we're taking steps on investigation. I think that little bit, at least from the 10 or 15 people I've talked to anecdotally who've had this frustration, I think they'll understand better. I think there is just a misinformation thing, and I think it could really be addressed. I know that there's a woman within the department whose name I'm forgetting who does deal with victims. But I think even, I know patrol officers are very busy, but even tasking them with the responsibility of just making that one call, like, hey, you know, we're on to this, making yourself available, I think will go frankly a long way in just the anecdotal information that I've heard from residents. And the final point I'll make, and then you can respond if you need to, you don't need to. You talked about trust, accountability, transparency, outreach. Collington, Captain Collington talked about this. Now, anecdotally, I've heard that these long lines and passport lines here are people of Latino or Hispanic background. Now, we all know in this room that to get a passport in the United States, you have to be a citizen or documented. So the fact that there are people who are so scared by what's going on at the national level, who are documented and here, feel the obligation to obtain another form of identification because they don't know, there's so much unknown, only gives us a slight glimpse into those who live in the shadows and who are undocumented. So I would really look to the police department, and not just the commanders in the room and the chief, but even individual patrol officers to make you more effective on the streets, to really make an affirmative effort to go out and put people at ease. And whether that be just going down in plain clothes once in a while in areas where you know there's people, I just think there is a lot of unease in the community, as you all know, and these people are going to be the ones who are going to help you solve very important crimes in our community. I just ask you, as somebody who can't talk about our status as a city on certain immigration issues, that you've taken a note to follow the law of this city, I urge you to take every step you can to ensure community members that, you know, this police department and the community is here for them. So thanks a lot for your presentation.
Councilmember Mayhew?
Yeah, thank you, Chief. Just given the time, I'll be brief. The overall crime data that shows the trend down for everything but assault, is that similar to patterns that you're hearing about in PG County and nearby parts of DC or Silver Spring? Or are we, or do we see something different this year in Tacoma?
I think, maybe not as drastic. And, and I really can't, because they haven't provided that information yet to COG, but when I get it, I'll be able to share that. I think you're going to see overall trends in many of those cases going down. That, that seems to be the anecdotal consensus at the meetings that I go to, that, you know, and again, population has not gone down. Population keeps increasing and crime keeps going down, so that's, that's sort of, you know, I think has everybody scratching their head.
Does that data come out in the next few months or so? I mean, when, when is it?
Well, Ron, when did they want?
They wanted earlier this year. We'll probably send out surveys probably next month.
Ron is on the Police Planners Subcommittee for COG, and they had made a request to have it done a little bit early this year, but we don't actually present the COG, I don't present it. I'll be presenting the report, but it won't be till October. It's not scheduled till October.
Okay. Well, I'm curious, if you, if you get it and there's something you can share, just share us back.
Yeah, and, and if I, if we can get into, I know we can get into Montgomery County's and see what theirs is, and I, and we get a daily report from Prince George's, that actually is updated every day, but I have to go back and look at what it was for 2016.
Okay. And the last thing, if you can keep working to try to get the ward-based data in parts that we can compare it to previous years, that'd be helpful to get at some point and get an update on when that might occur.
I think this is the third, third year, two and a half years that we've been into the, to the new reporting, but we also just started doing Nibers reporting versus UCR, which is, you know, the FBI was using UCR since 1933. Nibers is the newest version of that, where it actually, it's incident-based reporting. It's a lot more detailed. It has a lot more detail on closures and investigations and things like that, so.
But we can work putting it into word.
So we, we have to, we have to try and figure out how we're going to do that so you can go back in time, because it's just started. So, but yes, we, we will, we will get those, I think we're having trouble with the ward maps ourselves in LexisNexis, but.
Councilmember Kovar? Still with us?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Sorry about that. First, I just want to thank you for the very detailed report and having all your colleagues there. It's very helpful. And I do want to associate myself with Councilmember Kresch's comments about protocols to respond to victims of crime, which is something that has come up previously in community meetings. I think it's a great idea. Two questions. One, I don't think that the information that was provided in advance had this level of granular detail. Maybe you talked about it, and I couldn't quite pick it up in listening via phone, but could you say just a little bit about the extent to which, even with the drop in burglaries, what we're seeing and taking into account the possible arrest or possible prosecution of the guy you mentioned might be responsible for several dozen crimes? What the two hot areas in Ward 1 and Ward 3 along the DC border look like as of now?
Sure. Actually, there are none. The, there have been three or, I believe there's been four burglaries, maybe five in the city. Three were committed in one day by a homeless individual that we have arrested and charged with those burglaries. Those were in the area of Park and, and that area. And then there was one, I think, that, that was over in another ward on the other side, which is not really in the target area. We also targeted a group that was doing the daytime burglaries in several wards. In fact, we were, we were confused because the burglary stopped for about a month, and we learned that our suspect was in South Carolina for that month. And when we did the search warrants and placed him under arrest for our burglaries, which was the second time we've arrested him this year for burglary in the city, we, we wound up doing a search warrant, recovered a gun that was taken in a burglary while they were in South Carolina. So, but, but that was the group that was doing daytime burglary, so they were probably responsible for quite a few of the daytime ones. But we've, but since that last arrest, we haven't had any that we can attribute to them. So the numbers have really dropped off on burglary.
Okay, all right. That's helpful. One other unrelated question, the speed limit on Philadelphia Avenue, as you know, from Carroll down to Maple, it's 25 miles an hour. Then from that area up the hill all the way to Montgomery College, it's 30 miles an hour. And when people go down the hill toward Piney Branch, they're way in excess of 30 miles an hour, in excess of 40 in many cases. And the parts of the sidewalks are very thin and set, or there's a lot of families there, and they've actually had several groups come before the city councils to talk about that. Can you talk a little bit about what it would take to look at lowering that speed limit to 25 miles per hour to match the other section of Philadelphia along there? I know it's a state highway, but I'd like to hear what your thoughts on that.
Yeah, we, we've done one, one speed study on that location, and the average speed was like 32 miles an hour, with, with just very few that went, went over that. There was like 180 mile an hour speed, and that was at 2:00 in the morning. The, before the state will change that speed limit, they're going to want to conduct their own speed study anyway, if I'm not mistaken. So, I mean, it's something we can talk to them about. There is a lot of pedestrian traffic that crosses during the day, but traffic is usually so bad, it's during the day on that section of the road, that the speeds are a little bit lower. So I think it's something we'll look at. We can do another speed study as, you know, when the snowstorm ends tonight, we, we can get the metro counts out. We don't put them down generally in the wintertime because we do have to worry about snowstorms and then having them torn up by snowplows, but I don't think we have to worry about that for a while, so.
And there are other, there are other avenues that we're looking at related to speed, speed control, speed limits, and I, I think it actually, my guess is that it's not going to be the speed counts that will make the difference. It's going to be some other kind of legislative act of, action that allows us to have lower speed limits.
And now that we can look at, and now that we can look at our collision data too, that we can, that, that's really what's going to drive some of this as well.
Okay. That's helpful. I submitted some written questions earlier, and maybe we can get those addressed separately, so thank you for doing that.
We, we tried.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for being here tonight and bringing your crew with you. And I'm not, I'm going to be brief just because of the hour, but I did want to compliment you on, you know, a number of different things, including the closure rate, and certainly crime, we'll give you credit for the crime going down. But again, I think it shows some of the good work the department's doing. I wanted to express my appreciation that your report this year includes some comprehensive data on the drug arrests. That's something I've asked for for many years, and so I'm pleased to see that in the report now. I think it's very helpful since that's what we hear is one of the biggest problems in the community, that we see some statistics on that. And I was surprised with the numbers. They, they're kind of reassuring, reassuringly low in most cases. The, the one thing I don't recall you talking about is kind of gang activity?
Well, there's, there's actually a reason, because we're not seeing that level of gang activity that we have formerly seen. I mean, Maple Avenue Crew, a lot of them have grown up, moved out of the city or grown up and gotten jobs. They've taken it out of, maybe some of their activities out of the public eye. You know, we went, Charlie can actually answer. I want to put him on the spot because Charlie used to be, Charlie Hotsel, Sergeant Hotsel used to be in our gang unit when he was assigned as a officer and as a corporal. But if you just want to go over the numbers, you know, compared to gang incidents from what we had.
You have to come up to the mic.
You got to come up. Come on, man.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
It's going to ruin his undercover career.
I didn't mean to wake you up, Charlie.
He's studying.
So what I could say is, from three years ago, when we were looking at, over a 90-day period, when we started tracking more than one gang incident per day, whether that was graffiti or assaults or a robbery or any Part 1 or even minor offenses, I can say now, it's, it's almost non-existent. Like the chief was saying, the, the gang issues we had at Maple, Maple Avenue are pretty much non-existent. A lot of that has to do with either arrests made, and, and I think there were some, from specific arrests made of some major offenders, and I think that opened the eyes to a lot of the younger, you know, members that were coming up in the, in the chain of, of the hierarchy who decided maybe to do something else or move away.
How about in the crossroads area?
What's that?
How about in the Langley Park area?
It, Langley Park area, the same thing, because there were a lot of federal indictments by Task Force in the area on MS-13 and gangs like that. It kind of created a power vacuum where, you know, hopefully we don't, but chances are, we're going to see a rise, and we're already starting to see that in other parts of the region, where, you know, younger members are now becoming that, the leader, taking leadership roles. So, still, I mean, my, you know, the Criminal Investigation Division, we track this and we look at it, but.
I'm still seeing, I'm still seeing some graffiti in the area, or is that, you think mainly vandalism rather than gang activity?
So every graffiti we get, Criminal Investigation Division, and specifically, the SAT team looks at, and majority of it ends up not being gang-related. What we're seeing is an increase in some maybe DC graffiti art, for lack of a better word.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And lastly, I'd just like to express my own feelings of disappointment that we spent so many late hours, so much of our late time talking with the police department, when we could have maybe changed priorities and talked with you earlier and longer.
And I just
It's my personal policy.
Show up when I'm told to be here.
We do try to have, when the citizens come, have them come a little earlier, but it, it would be nice to be able to spend a lot more time on issues.
And you can always request that something gets changed on the agenda beforehand.
And in answer to Councilmember Mayhew's question real quick about the aggravated assaults, I think you, you brought it up. Some of that is MS-13 gang, especially in Montgomery County and Prince George's, where there's some additional homicides, Manassas, Virginia, Prince William County, some of those counties have large populations of MS-13. And, you know, so that Montgomery County is seeing and experiencing, most of their, their increases in homicides are from, you know, MS-13 gang members.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, I will join the conversation by saying that I'm so tired, I can't remember what the question is that I wanted to ask you. I had a whole lot of them.
I was like that at 6:00, so don't feel bad.
So you're lucky. I, the one that I do remember is that in, in the last couple of weeks, there's been two, two incidents drawn to my attention about drug, drug dealing, either distribution or man. there's been two incidents drawn to my attention about drug dealing, either distribution or manufacturing in my ward. But these are private residences where this alleged activity is going on. And both incidences, I've reported them to you, and you know, you're familiar with them. I'm, my question has to do with when we suspect, and we have lots of neighbors who are sort of saying, yeah, yeah, there's stuff going. What are the protocols that allow you, just speaking in terms of the orders and how you manage those sorts of situations when it's in a private residence?
Well, if they're, if they're dealing, I mean, if, you know, there's, you know, since there's been a decriminalization of marijuana, we get complaints in apartment buildings all the time, the smell of marijuana is killing me. And I'm sitting here trying to watch TV with my kids, and I can smell it, and it's a civil offense. We're not going to get a search warrant. We're not kicking doors down for a civil offense. But on those cases where they're distributing and it becomes a public nuisance, where you're getting cars all times of night.
Right.
There's, you know, other illicit activity that, as a result of that, you know, we recommend that they call us. But there's also the tip line, you know, the text to tip, and there's also the email. And anything that you put through to Kathy, Plebey, will get forwarded to the correct place, which in most cases will be Sergeant Hosen's crew. And depending on the type of case it is, maybe even patrol. But we do investigate those, and, you know, obviously, I don't want to put out too much about how we investigate them or what procedures we use, but that is the appropriate place for it to go.
Those, what you can't talk about is what I would like to learn about, so maybe we'll do that in another venue.
We can do that fairly quickly, too.
Yeah, because that's of interest to me, because I like to be able to advise when resident, my constituents, bring this, these kind of matters to my attention. I don't want to sit there and explain all the strategies and tactics and stuff like that, but to be able just to reassure them that this is something, that I can realistically reassure them, that this is something that can be taken care of in due time.
Yes, and we do, we do build cases against these people. And what happens, even if you have a reluctant complainant that wants to remain somewhat anonymous, we don't ask them to testify in court or anything, but very often we'll reach out to them, contact them, get additional information so that we can, you know, tailor our investigation around that particular problem. But, and it's probably already been done in those cases that you've already talked to me about.
You know, so I'm eager to learn more about it, but we got to figure out a way to do that.
Okay.
To communicate, because otherwise, all I can tell people is, my constituents, is that the matter's being investigated by my police, our police department, and that's all I know. I'd like to be able to tell them, everything's cool. Don't worry about it.
Yes, sometimes we have to be a little bit careful about what we tell even the complainants because they have kids that may be friends with some of these people. There's always that.
No, I understand.
So we don't want to compromise an investigation, but we do try to keep people in the loop as much as we can.
I'm not going to ask any more questions because I can't remember what my questions were.
Well, they're never very far, so we can always find the police department. Councilmember Smith?
Chief, I just want to thank you and your team for coming out. And I want to piggyback on Councilmember Schultz. I've had some issues in my ward. And if you're going to have a briefing, I would like to be present. Thank you.
Yes, and actually, well, we can talk a little bit off the record.
Great, thank you. I just, quick questions. The CAM program, I know with getting the residents to install video cameras, has that gotten better this year? I know we had some.
I don't, I still don't think we're getting the buy-in from people.
Not too many people. We do have some videos from people who.
Get closer to the mic.
We do have some videos from some people that are registered that have been helpful in investigations, but we haven't had a lot of people sign up for it. And if you're getting blurry-eyed, you know, and you see two of us.
All right, and I know Councilmember Mael has brought this up before, and I think, is DC doing it now where they do give a rebate or some kind of program? I didn't know how that was working in DC, and you don't, you can get back to us.
Yeah, we can check on that. I mean, DC also does it, does some commercial partnerships too, where they actually have access, real-time access to the cameras for commercial establishments. And I know Philadelphia did some tax incentives to get people to sign up. I will tell you that it has been invaluable in our investigations. We have gotten really good video. The guy that we're talking about on, in your neighborhood, the neighbors, I mean, are really quick to call us. Even if they don't register, they at least understand the importance of getting that video to us and contacting us. And a lot of times I'll see something that you send me on the listserv that says, hey, I got video of this guy, and they haven't called us. And I'll reach back out to the council members to help out in case, in fact, in your neighborhood, they have some video and actually need to get that video to Sergeant Poole.
Great. Well, if there's anything we can find out from the folks in the district or Philly, that'd be great. And also just to say that I think the neighborhood meetings over the last year, year and a half, people really appreciate it. And we're glad to see the crime rates go down. I think we should make sure we keep up the meetings, though. I think sometimes these meetings happen when people are afraid and scared, and we have a spike in a certain area. And I think working with all of us to continue having those smaller neighborhood meetings are really beneficial.
And if you could please stress to the people organizing the meetings to invite us to, because we don't, you know, we're not on the listservs, and sometimes we just don't know, because even if there's nothing going on in the neighborhood, we'd like to have an officer come by, the beat officer, and just get to know the people, so.
And I'll put a plug in if anybody's on duty and wants to stop by on Friday, March 3rd for coffee.
The coffees.
The coffees. And I just want to say thank you also to all the officers who've come out to the Boy Scout. Pancake supper, going to the schools, the Blair, winter social and everything. It's just, you know, people in the community and even outside of our Tacoma Park community are really noticing all of you showing up. And so many of you showed up at the pancake supper. It got folks a little nervous at first when they walked in. But then they were all very glad to see you. So it's being noticed, and residents are very happy to see our officers out and about in the community and more social events. So thank you.
One of the things that was really nice that wasn't mentioned, but I enjoyed seeing the folks get ready for is a number of the officers did the polar plunge for raising money for Special Olympics, and including our new cadet, which, and.
Yeah, he was there, so.
It's like, oh, my gosh, that's a way to break in a new employee. But, you know, I just feel have a really good sense that there's a nice feeling of the officers really want to do these things. And so, yeah, I miss the pancake thing myself, but I'm glad we were well represented.
All right, I think that's it. Thank you all for staying so late and for so many of you coming out this evening. Thank you. Yeah, we're done. That's it. We're done.
Oh, you didn't.
Before midnight.